And I hereby call the May 21st, 2024 City Commission Meeting to order. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Adamchak?
Present.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Here.
Commissioner Mata?
Here.
Mayor, we have four Commissioners present. The quorum of three has been met.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in saying the Prelate's Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
We have two proclamations on our agenda tonight. May I invite Marsha Rozell, Jen Alley, Lauren Chard, and Scott Seaborn forward. Whereas our Manhattan hospitality industry is essential to the success of every business and a critical part of our community's economy, development, and workforce, whereas travel is an economic powerhouse for Kansas and Manhattan as a destination with an economic output of $214 million and generating 2,654 jobs, whereas travel spending supports vibrant and safe communities in Manhattan by generating an estimated $23.1 million in state and local tax revenue in 2022 to support essential services such as education, emergency response, public education, and more. Whereas travel enables success for all industries, including manufacturing, agriculture, defense, healthcare, and more, by driving growth, by driving sales growth, innovation, education, and operations that power our economy, our nation, and Manhattan, Kansas. Whereas America's travel industry cannot be globally competitive without maximizing growth in leisure, business, and international inbound travelers, increasing travel to and within the United States drives our economy to more prosperous future and connects America. Whereas small businesses account for more than 60% of leisure and hospitality employment and are the fabric of our community, whereas leisure travel inspires countless benefits to health, wellness, creativity, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, and relationships, whereas visitors enjoy Manhattan as the gateway to the Flint Hills, experiencing the Flint Hills Discovery Center, Sunset Zoo, multiple running events, including the Bill Snyder Half Marathon, zip lining, hiking and biking trails, hunting, fishing, golf, water parks, the many offerings of Kansas State University and Big 12 sports, and during the spirit of the holidays, the Festival of Light celebration. Therefore, I, Susan E. Adamchak, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 19th to 25th, 2024, as National Travel and Tourism Week. And I urge the citizens of Manhattan to join me in this special observance. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the Seal of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, to be affixed this 21st day of May, 2024. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Yeah. Yeah. If I could say just a few words, I just want to introduce those of us that are up here with me. My name's Marsha Rozell. I'm the Director of Visit Manhattan. I have Jen Alley, who's our Convention Sales Manager, Lauren Chard, who is our Sports Sales Manager, and then Scott Seaborn is the Chair of our Steering Committee for Visit Manhattan. And I just want to thank you for reading all of these things. Tourism does so much. We know that travel means something economically to us, but also for our mental health. It doesn't matter if you're coming for a conference or a sporting event. It's our great amenities here in Manhattan, like our restaurants, our dining, our shopping, that bring visitors here. I appreciate the community that welcomes our visitors and makes their stay here memorable so that they not only return, but tell others how great Manhattan is to visit. So, thank you.
And I have asked Commissioner McCullough to present the next proclamation.
Well, I'm back to the "whereas"s. Whereas mental health is an essential part of overall well-being, impacting individuals, families, and communities across Manhattan, Kansas. And one in five American adults experiences a mental health condition each year, and everyone faces challenges in life that can impact their mental health. And whereas despite its prevalence, mental health remains shrouded in stigma, preventing many from seeking help. And whereas early intervention and access to quality care are essential for managing mental health conditions and improving the quality of life, May is recognized nationally as Mental Health Month, Mental Health Awareness Month. Therefore, I Karen McCullough, acting for Susan Adamchak, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, do hereby proclaim May, 2024, as Mental Health Month in Manhattan, and call upon the businesses, schools, government agencies, healthcare providers, organizations, and citizens of the City of Manhattan to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding mental health, its relationship to a strong, vibrant community, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health. Therefore, Susan Adamchak will set her hand and cause the Seal of the City of Manhattan to be affixed this 21st day, 2024. And could I just say, I was very involved in the Mental Health Task Force, and working with that over the years has been such an eye-opener for me. I have dealt with the people. I am not in any way capable of directing anybody's mental health, but hearing from the ER nurses at Ascension, who spent eight hours trying to find a placement for someone, hearing for just all the stories, and we did do some good things. We have a stabilization unit. We have a drunk house. We have a number of things, but there's still so much to do. And we're so pleased we have a new person to direct ours, Michael Rizkala. Why don't you tell them what you're doing?
Thank you. My name is Mike Rizkala. I'm the new CEO of Ponti Mental Health, and I would like to seize this opportunity to thank you for acknowledging the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month. This signifies your commitment to the promotion of the importance of mental health care. Mental Health Month, Mental Health Awareness Month was established in 1949 by Mental Health America to increase awareness of the importance of mental health and wellness in Americans' lives and celebrate recovery from mental illness. At Ponti Mental Health, our theme for the month is to be kind to your mind. At Ponti Mental Health, we are committed to enhancing the well-being of individuals and families in our community through a holistic approach to behavioral health and recovery services. Our mission, for many, many years, continues to be unchanged, which is to provide compassionate, person-centered care that fosters healing, empowerment, and resilience for close to 7,000 people every year in our 10-county service area. We appreciate the City of Manhattan for supporting Mental Health Awareness Month and for supporting Ponti Mental Health and for allowing us to get this proclamation signed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome to Manhattan.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
This is our opportunity for general public comments. Those wanting to make comments not related to any item on the agenda can do so at this time. Members of the public that signed up in person on the list at the podium before the meeting will go first. I understand that as of now, no one has signed up yet. And then any other member of the public in the audience may stand and be recognized to come forward. If you haven't already signed up to speak, please be sure to sign in on the list located at the podium. Please state your name, residential address, and/or the organization you are representing for the record, and for those who are listening or watching this evening. You may have five months, five minutes to speak. Can speak only once and must stop speaking when the timer sounds. Neither the Commissioners nor City staff will answer questions or debate an issue. We will take your comments under advisement.
Good evening. I'm Carla Hagermeister. I am representing the Flint Hill Spread Basket for this evening. We are located at 905 Yuma. 905 Yuma. There we go. Again, Carla Hagermeister, representing Flint Hill Spread Basket. And I'm here tonight to say thank you to past and present City Commissioners, leaders, and staff for your support of the Flint Hill Spread Basket. You've been a key partner since we began in 1982, so we want you to be among the first to know that the Bread Basket will be moving to a new location later this year. As many of you know, the needs of our community have outgrown the physical capacity of our location at 905 Yuma. In May of 2022, we hosted 477, 76 visits. By comparison, in April of this year, we welcomed over 1,600 visits in one month. Today alone, we opened at 2:00, and I refreshed my computer at 6:00 PM, and we had welcomed 95 households today alone. Four of those households were new, and out of that, that represents 263 people served in one day. We will be open until 6:30, or until the last person is served this evening. We host between 90 and 100 new families each month, and we don't see that trend turning around. The Bread Basket's mission to provide reliable access to healthy food, build connections with community partners, and empower neighbors to meet their basic needs is a center of everything that we do. And we're excited for this opportunity to better serve our guests in a way that is welcoming to all. I want to extend my thanks to City staff, who have fielded many questions and ideas for me over the past months and in the past 40 years. They have been diligent and thoughtful and wonderful partners to work with. I look forward to continuing to work with them during this time of transition and long into the future, even after the move is complete. I'll be back anytime you'd like to share more information about this opportunity. And as always, the door is open for you to come and visit us in person, whether it's at 905 Yuma for the next several months, or in our new spot that will be announced shortly. Thank you very much.
Carla, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
What's your connection, then, with Common Table? Will you all be working with them, or?
We work collaboratively with Common Table. We are separate organizations. So, Common Table is a common, community meal location, whereas the Bread Basket is focused more on households getting access to foods that they are then able to take home and provide and cook at home for their families. So, similar, common, common population that we serve in some ways, but in other ways, probably not necessarily a common population. A lot of Common Table families are coming for the sense of community. They also might not have access to actually prepare foods at home. Might be a person who's unhoused or doesn't have access to all the kitchen essentials. So, some overlap, but certainly not complete, and honestly, both needed.
Thank you.
Thanks for that opportunity, and thank you all.
Thank you, Carla. Are there any, is there anyone else who would like to make a general comment? All right. The general public comment is now closed. The next item is open Commissioner comment. Commissioner Mata, do you have any remarks? Commissioner Opel?
Yeah. So, I just kind of want to say a couple words about former Mayor Wyn Butler. You know, what happened to him was very unfortunate. I want to say that the decision that he made, I believe is the correct decision, and I respect that he made that decision. He and I may disagree on some political things, but I've always, I've always found him to be a reasonable person, and we've had some good conversations. So, just kind of want to get that out there. I know it's kind of an elephant in the room this evening, but he spent a lot of time serving Manhattan, and he really loved serving Manhattan. So, agree with him or not, he did dedicate a lot of his time and effort into trying to make this city better.
I would just echo Peter, having been on the Commission with Lynn for many years, and I'm sad that his commissioning stopped for this reason. He did serve Manhattan for many years and always voted his conscience. I would also like to remind everybody that Susan Adams is leaving as the Director of the Flint Hills Discovery Center. There's a little reception for her there this Thursday at 3:00. She has been an amazing director. Last year, we had 93,000 visitors at the Discovery Center, which is super. So, we hate to lose her, but that's the way people, they all want to retire and have fun.
I would also like to acknowledge the leadership of Mayor Butler and express appreciation for his long service to Manhattan. I would also like to share that yesterday, the Environmental Protection Agency announced 2024 grant awardees, including the Flint Hills Regional Council, of which we are a member. Flint Hills Regional Council will be receiving $8.5 million to continue the brownfield assessment program within our region. This brings their grant awards to a total of $2.1 million. We were, this was the only organization to receive an EPA grant in the state of Kansas. So, I think we should appreciate the work that they are doing. This is a planning and assessment grant. They will have funds available to help other communities in the region determine remediation efforts for brownfield properties. Manhattan has benefited from two of their previous grants already. So, I would just like to recognize them. Thank you. All right. Now, we're moving on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have been previously reviewed by the City Commission. A Commissioner may request an item be moved for separate discussion and consideration immediately following the consent agenda, or at a different point on the agenda if desired by the City Commission. Does the Commission have any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda questions?
I have two. I would like to remove item I-1 and discuss that separately. And then I just kind of want to make a comment. The last five months I've been on the Commission, very routinely, we vote on change orders for a lot of our construction projects, and I understand that they do happen. Construction is difficult to get exact. In particular, there's one tonight that's almost 20% of the total cost. Well, it's only $64,000. I kind of wonder if we might want to consider giving a little bit more, at least, attention to those things when they do come up. I don't know if we could maybe consider a policy of a certain percentage of a project, maybe needs to be considered separately, but at least discussed. I'm not saying that we shouldn't vote for these things because a lot of them are mid-project, and if we don't vote for them, we're not going to finish the project. But I think it's still important that they at least get discussed, you know, in these open meetings, just so folks understand kind of the process.
Yeah, it would probably be good if we had an idea of the engineer's estimate, too. You know, so we could see what the engineer's estimate was, what the bid was, then what the increase is, and that kind of thing.
Sure.
We had originally scheduled a work session for you all this evening to talk about change orders. That didn't come together. We had some other things happen in the last week that we were preparing for. So, we do have that on the radar.
Okay.
We recognize our policies are a certain way, and we've been handling change orders here recently differently. We'd like some feedback, and so we can create that. But it would give you an opportunity to understand change orders as well. This one in particular, obviously, is dealing with our wastewater treatment plant. We're adding fencing. The fencing alone around the project with a gate to create the security is almost $50,000. The total of the project was just around $300. So,
Yeah.
It is sizable. Part of our discussion with you all is things that are anticipated, things that are unanticipated. And when they're anticipated, we need to be very open and upfront with you all about that. It's the unanticipated ones,
Mm-hmm.
Where it's like, all right, is that on the design side? Is that on the staff side? Is that on the contractor's side? Just where was that quote-unquote oversight made?
Yeah.
Because the change order's coming, and we're obviously asking you all to consider that. So,
Yeah.
That's the difference in some of the change order conversations, but we do anticipate coming back soon for that broader discussion with you all.
Cool. Appreciate that.
Yep.
Commissioner, which, I'm sorry, which section was that that you?
I-1. It's the relocation of the overhead electric.
Okay. Okay. I had a couple questions on the bonding stuff. So, we're doing $12 million in general obligation bonds, and the majority of that is infrastructure, am I right? I mean, for developments.
On the special assessment side?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, I think it's important that the public know that there are other ways to do this. And we've seen, we've occasionally gotten bitten, like on North Wreath, when we were stuck with property that we put the infrastructure in, and nobody, the developer walked away. I think originally, we did specials to assist developers who would want to put in eight houses, then they didn't have adequate funds to build the eight. They had to sell a couple till, you know. But I think most of our developers have moved to the position that they're well able to fund the infrastructure costs and to be responsible for them. And, you know, we've had a lot of talk about taxes in the last couple of weeks, but I think one real problem with taxes is people don't understand the difference between their property tax and their specials. And so, they tell me, you know, I pay $8,000 in property tax, and I say, I don't think so, because I know where you live, and I know what your house is worth. I think you probably pay quite a bit of, more than half of that, in specials. I just want to say, you know, in the future, it was something I would like us to talk about. The other thing is, we're issuing temp notes for $41 million. What's, is that, is that, some of that paid for by the feds on the levy and that? I mean, that's, that's a lot of temp notes. Oh, there you are.
Good evening.
I knew you'd be here.
So, the temporary notes are related to some renewals. So, the levy project is not complete. We need to renew those temporary notes. We also have some of the Aggieville infrastructure, but the parking garage and some of the other street improvements that are being renewed until December as well.
The Aggieville parking garage already exists?
Yes.
Yes. So, we're still rolling those over in temporary notes?
Yes, ma'am.
So, that's $41 million is kind of a lot of temporary notes.
We already had those outstanding. That was $38 million. So, we decided to roll those over, and we'll issue the bonds in December.
And so, now because we're not using the usual way we do bonds, we're going through a sort of a two-person process, am I right?
We had a negotiated sale.
Yeah. What did we get in the interest rates?
The interest rates. So, let me bring up the packet information, but for the bonds is over 3%, and then the temporary notes was a little bit over 4%. So, it's in your packet, the memo?
Was it? I didn't. Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Karen, are you okay? Sorry, Commissioner McCullough, are you okay with
Karen's okay.
those responses, or do you want to have further discussion on?
If anybody wants to discuss, but yeah, I'm okay with that. I just, I just think we have to note that we have had our bond rating lowered because of our extensive indebtedness. And as long as everything's perking along well in Manhattan, that's fine. But, you know, should we have an issue like happened in 2008, when the banks and the home loans and all those things went crazy, it could be kind of scary.
We will now receive public comment on any item on tonight's consent agenda. Members of the public that have signed up in person on the list at the podium before the meeting will go first. And then any other members of the public in the audience may stand and be recognized. If you haven't already signed up to speak, please be sure to sign in on the list located at the podium. Please state your name, residential address, and/or organization you are representing for the record, and for those who are listening or watching this evening. You will have five minutes, can speak only once, and must stop speaking when the timer sounds. Neither Commissioners nor staff will answer questions or debate an issue. We will take your comments under advisement.
Good evening. I'm Mel Borst, 1918 Humboldt Street, and I just wanted to comment on consent agenda item H, number one, the authorization of the city-state supplemental agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation for the Juliet Brick Restoration Project. And I wanted to congratulate the city on a wonderful job of the Juliet restoration so far, from Bluemont to Points, and as well as the separate project of the intersection there. It's just beautifully done, and looking forward to this next phase of Juliet's restoration to the south. So, I love driving that street, and it's, even though there's not a big bump in it anymore, to have some fun on, but it's just a beautiful job, and it's a real credit to our City staff, and also the leadership of Rob, Robert Ott. And so, I remember him every time I'm driving on that street. And also, I really appreciate the involvement that Rob had with the Manhattan Preservation, Manhattan Riley County Preservation Alliance with support for this project, and look forward to continued support as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mel. Anyone else? All right. The public comment period is now closed. Is there a motion from the Commission?
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda minus item I-1.
Second.
Any comments or discussion? Commissioner Opel made the motion. Commissioner McCullough seconded the motion. City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Mayor Adamchak?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay. All right. The item that was withdrawn from the consent agenda was item I-1, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with Evergy Central Kansas, Inc., for the relocation of overhead electric transmission lines for the Seco Park Improvement Project,
Evening Commissioners. Erin Stewart, Parks and Rec Director, I'll be filling in for Wyatt, who's the lead on this project. So, I believe a few months ago, and let me see if I can actually find, yeah, March 26th, during the update to the Commission, we talked about the power lines on the outside of Seco Ballpark and the need for either for those to be buried, or we shift the entire complex south. And the decision was kind of recommended at that time, or the feedback was recommended at that time, to bury them. And this is that change order for the anticipated cost, $495,000, that we would put into that project. So, I would be happy to answer any questions about it that I can. Did we, okay, so, I think that this is a reasonable course of action, but I do want to know, was it feasible for us to get a, an estimate for the other course of action, which is to move the, like, was that even ideal, like, It would be tremendously It would be tremendously more expensive and/or fundamentally change the project. Meaning, we would have to shrink the fields in order to accomplish that, or the amount of earthwork that would have been required to actually move it that 15 feet on the south side, in particular where the drainage area is right now. And I apologize, I don't have that number, but it was considered exponentially more expensive than the 500,000 to do, to shift it to maintain size. We could have shrunk the fields.
This was because the lights interfered with the pole?
Yeah, so the new lighting structures with the size of the fields would interfere with the existing overhead lines, at least in two locations. In addition, the fence line, putting that in there would butt up against that electrical overhead line.
I just have a real problem with this. A half a million dollars to put some power lines under the ground. Yesterday, I was at the law board, and we talked about not having police in the schools to save money. And I realized these are two totally different buckets of money. But it all adds up to the same taxes on the public. And I think, you know, I think maybe we need to step back a bit, and maybe we can do some of our parking wrecks and not have it be sort of gold-plated, but maybe just have it be silver. I know we want to build a wonderful thing out there, but there's a lot of things in that concept that I feel are really unnecessary for kids to get out there and play ball. And the main thing I would suggest that we do to improve the thing is shade, because having been a mother at many of those games, it's not, it's always hot, and it's always sort of breathless. So, you know. But I just wish there was some way we could work around this and not spend half a million dollars, which we could build a skate park with instead. So that's just, I'm sorry, that's just how I feel.
So I just want to go back to when this was presented to the commission before, the direction that was given.
Yes.
And at the time, the.
But you have to remember, you just sort of present things to us often, Aaron. And then we do research, and we're not always sure that we've gotten the whole story. I mean, I've driven by Seco several times, and I've seen where the lights are now and where the pole is. It just seems to me this is too much money. I'm sorry. That's okay, that's, everybody has, we have four votes here, and I'm pretty sure I'm going to be outvoted, but that's just how I feel.
I would just say, you know, like I said, it makes, this makes sense to me. We have the opportunity to bury some old utilities that will, I think, in long-term, end up being more safe. I think it's just important, again, kind of like the change order thing, that we are transparent with our decision-making. I understand, like, we would have had to basically redesign the entire concept to try and move this thing 15 feet or whatever. But I think just, just be, try to be a little bit more transparent about that. And that's my only thing. I'm fine with it, you know, it's, I think, 3% or so of the total cost, which, you know, is still an additional cost, but when you consider the long-term effects, I think it is worth it. So that's really kind of my biggest, the biggest reason I wanted to make this a separate vote.
Just as a reminder, the initial estimate that was given was actually 880,000 in that commission update, so.
That's right.
This is significantly lower than that, which is good. But again, I think we are doing our best to try to be transparent with everything that we're doing. And obviously, we don't want to spend any more money than we have to doing these things, because we have put it into the complex itself.
Yeah.
Aaron, I realize you're standing in for Jared. Are you able to give us just a summary, broad picture of what would be involved in this? Is it, what's the distance involved? I know you mentioned before that it would be concurrent with some roadwork that will already be taking place along Kimball. Just so we have an order of magnitude of.
I will give my best shot at this. Don't take it for what it's worth. But generally, from the Candlewood entrance to Wreath is the area, and that's where we would bury those lines. So, and that would include all utilities, you know, power, cable, et cetera, so.
When we talk about burying lines, it's not just a matter of cutting them off the line and dropping them down and putting some dirt on them, right? There's.
I assume, I assume not. That's a little outside my field of expertise, but I assume there's a, they're putting them in a, some sort of significantly sized conduit. Again, way outside my expertise.
We've buried a lot of overhead on North Campus Corridor and down in Aggieville. And you're correct. We have to go work with Larson, who will do the trenching, who will put in the conduit and create the space for them to pull their lines through and bury them. When we talked about this in March, we also recognized the timeline that we're on for GMP, which will be coming to you in the next couple of months, as well as a construction timeline that would start towards the end of the year. The sequence of events and the phasing of this was also realized how much earlier we needed to have this work done before BHS could even start their construction. It was a safety hazard. They weren't going to be able to do a lot of the work in the outfield until this line was buried. That's what prompted us to bring it back so quickly and get that work started. It is part of the project. It is part of a sales tax that was voted on by the community in 2017. It was envisioned to have the fields at the size that they're being designed at. Encroaching into that storm drainage area compromises not only the park, but several owners downstream. That drainage ditch is very, very important to the neighborhoods south of Dickens, all the way to Anderson Avenue. It's, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to encroach on that and start taking up valuable detention for a storm drainage that really covers a pretty big area off to the northwest of the community. So burying the overhead line was realized as an expense, and realized as a design issue that we needed to address in order to proceed with what the voters took into consideration in 2017. That revenue is dedicated to this project. That revenue cannot be used anywhere else in this community.
Yeah.
But for the things they voted on.
But we're already spending more than we're taking in on this. I mean, we're not, we planned to redo Seco for like 7 million, and now it's 14 million or something, so.
Revenue streams are also up.
Yeah. Yes, I know.
Revenue's there to support the project.
There's no way to move the lights to make this work, because it's basically the lights that we're having issues with.
No, well, I do believe it's more than that, but no, you could not remove the pole placement because of lighting direction, candle power, and what's needed, what's required for safety.
And keeping the lights outside of the play field.
Yeah.
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 Well, I'm sorry. I do think in the future, when we put things on the consent agenda for the public, we ought to put the fiscal note. You know, when people reading this, it just says that we authorize the mayor and city clerk for supplemental agreement. It doesn't say that the supplemental agreement is a half a million dollars. So it's just.
Are you talking about the agenda or the actual item?
The agenda.
Yeah.
The thing that goes out to the public.
The actual item.
We see, we see the cost, yes.
The public sees it as well.
They can click.
All those items are available for them to look at.
Well, okay.
Oh, sorry, I have one more. If I remember, this could also coincide with the road construction along Kimball, right?
And again, this is moving at a pace different than what we talked about in March. And that's why it's on your agenda.
Okay.
That work needs to take place before BHS can even start this fall. Because of the safety issues of where that fence and those lights are relocated.
Right, so.
The work on Kim, the work on Kimball, from basically the top of the hill at Erickson Hudson area, all the way down to Wreath, probably a year and a half away.
Okay, all right, got it. Thanks.
Commissioner Mata, do you have any comments? We'll now receive public comment. Members of the public that signed up in person on the list at the podium before the meeting will go first, then any other members of the public in the audience may stand and be recognized to come forward. If you haven't already signed up to speak, please be sure to sign in with your name and address and any, the organization you are representing for the record and for those who are listening or watching tonight. Each speaker will have five minutes to speak, can speak only once, and must stop speaking when the timer sounds. Neither the commissioners nor the city staff will answer questions or debate an issue. We'll take your comments under advisement. Okay. Seeing no one approach the podium, I will say, declare that public comment is now closed. Commissioners, do you have any further questions of city staff? Is there a motion for the commission? On the discussion of item I-1 on the consent agenda?
I'll move that we approve item I-1 on the consent agenda. Oh, item I-1, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with Everge Central Kansas, Inc. for the relocation of overhead electric transmission lines for the Seco Park Improvement Project.
Second.
Any additional comments or discussion? Commissioner Opel made the motion, and Commissioner Mata seconded the motion. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
No, I could vote for this if the project were under budget, but it's not.
Motion carries three to one.
Thank you. We'll now move into the consent agenda. General agenda, sorry, first time, first time. Okay. So members of the public may speak as each item on the general agenda is presented. You'll again have one speaking opportunity for up to five minutes. Our first item is to consider amending, to consider amending the Anderson Village Planned Unit Development to allow short-term rentals. The Manhattan Urban Plan, Urban Area Planning Board recommends approval. And the requested action is to approve the first reading of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 6027 of the Anderson Village P U D to allow for short-term rentals based on the findings of the staff report and the recommendations of the Manhattan Area Planning Board. Stephanie, would you like to make a presentation?
Yes, it is a very short presentation. Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. So the Anderson Village P U D amendment, that is before you this evening. This is the location of that P U D immediately west of the Manhattan Christian College. Because this P U D doesn't specifically list that short-term rentals are a permitted use, they have to go through this process, which requires that ordinance to be amended. There are two units that are being proposed as the short-term rentals within the second floor of this building. As the mayor said, that this was, this went to the planning board earlier this month, and it was recommended seven to zero to approve. There were no public comments at that meeting, and very little discussion by the board. With that, if there are any questions that you have, I am happy to answer those.
Yeah, so in the materials, it mentioned that if they wanted to do three, they'd have to do some evaluation with the fire department. Can you talk about that?
Correct. So the way, and I don't think anyone's here from fire. So my understanding of that is because of building code. Once you exceed a certain, I think it's 10% of a building becomes of a transient nature, it actually changes the use from fires' perspective. So it goes from a residential building to a commercial building. And with that, it triggers certain requirements such as egress, there's exit lighting signs that have to happen. They treat it more like a hotel, because people aren't as familiar with the space. And so right now, as long as they have two, those provisions wouldn't apply.
Okay. How many apartments do they have total? I think it was like six or.
Oh, I thought they had more. I am not sure.
I can't, I thought it was in there.
10%, I think there's probably a little over 20 then.
20 apartments in there, wow, okay.
That was my understanding. I'm trying to pull up their site plan. Well, maybe not. I'll go look back at the staff report, and then I can share that with you.
Okay.
Stephanie, is the applicant here this evening, would they like to make a comment?
I am not sure. There are a lot of people in this room, so I haven't been able to scan it yet.
There are 24 second-floor apartments.
Thank you, Jared.
Thanks, Jared.
And I believe the owner of the property is Manhattan Christian College. Is there anyone here from the college to make comment? Are there any additional questions from the commissioners?
I just have kind of more of a comment to when we're considering this. And I think something that we should recognize is that this will take permanent housing and turn it into, you know, more of a transient nature, which kind of goes against what we're trying to do overall, even though it is only, you know, 10% of these. And I'm sure that they will be filled fairly frequently, given their proximity to campus. You know, so that's just kind of something that I think we ought to think about and, you know, include in our decision-making.
I think one question I had was whether this was for, and you may not know the answer for this, but given that it is owned by the college, whether it was intended for use for visiting faculty members, guest speakers, people who might be coming specifically to, you know, for, you know, college-related purposes, rather than as an Airbnb for football weekends.
I do not know. That was not something that I saw here in their application. They just speak to the two apartments that would be utilized for the short-term rental purposes.
Perhaps that's something that in future applications, we should ask for that information? What, you know, in the way that, I don't, does the university still use that house on?
Helen Brockman's.
Yeah. Is that still used as temporary housing for visitors?
I'm not aware of that.
Is there a limit on how many people can be in that, those spaces?
Based on occupancy?
Uh huh.
We.
It said it must not be occupied by or rented to more than one family.
So then there, it would just be based on how many are in a, how we define family. So that could be adoption, it doesn't necessarily have to be blood. The other thing I would say, state is that part of the M D C does include some provisions that all short-term rentals must follow. There are seven of those. But those are things like you can't have a party, you can't have a catered event, that noise must be kept to a minimum. I would say that if, in the future, you would like for staff to modify our application to ask specific questions of the short-term rentals, that would be something that we would need to probably discuss. And then I'd look to Rachel, not to put her on the spot, but of how we would, if that was something that we would need to modify into our development code. Because right now, we do only limit, there's those seven factors unless the planning board or the city commission chose to place additional conditions on that property.
Peter, I appreciate you bringing that up, that's a concern. We'll now open this up for public comment. Members of the public signed up, can we all do this together now? Members of the public that signed up in person on the list at the podium before the meeting will go first, then any other members of the public in the audience may stand and be recognized to come forward. If you haven't already signed up to speak, please be sure to sign in at the podium with your name, residential address, and/or organization you are representing for the, to facilitate our records and for those listening and watching this presentation, this evening. Each speaker has five minutes, can speak only once, must stop speaking when the timer sounds. Neither commissioners nor staff will answer questions or debate an issue. Is there anyone who would like to make comments on this item? Seeing none, I will say that the public comment period is now. Seeing none, I will say that the public comment period is now closed. Does city staff have any final comments regarding this item? Commissioners, do you have any further? Okay. So, is there a motion from the commission?
Sure. I move we approve first reading of an ordinance, amending ordinance number six oh two seven of the Anderson Village PUD to allow for short-term rentals based on the findings of the staff report and the recommendation of the Manhattan Urban Planning Board, who I usually agree with.
And a second?
Second.
Any further comments or discussion? Okay. Commissioner McCullough made the motion, Commissioner Opelt seconded the motion. City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay. We will now consider item B. Consider amending sections of the city code regarding the city-owned parking garages and discuss fees for the downtown parking garage and possible use of the transient guest tax to offset group rate fees. And we will take action to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending section thirty one thirty-one through thirty-seven, section thirty-one through one oh eight of the Code of Ordinances related to city-owned parking garages. So, we'll have a presentation from city staff. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, commissioners. I'm Jared Wassinger, Assistant City Manager. Also with us tonight is Adrian Tucker, our Parking Services Manager. I'm in the Parking Services Division oversee our our two parking garages along with on-street parking within the downtown and Aggieville districts. We were first before the city commission back in the fall of 2023. We provided the commission an update related to the downtown parking garage. We'd done some structural reports with Walker Consultants and found out we had about a million dollars that we needed to kind of invest in the downtown garage for structural repairs over the next five years. So, at that time, we started discussing with the city commission fees within user fees within the downtown garage to recoup those costs that we were going to need to put into the garage for those improvements, those necessary improvements. We discussed fees. We also discussed the possible use of TGT if fees wasn't palatable from the commission. At that time, we got direction to move forward with fees approach, but also look at how we're going to accommodate conferences and some of those long-term guests who are going to be using the garage, staying within the district. We then kind of had that conversation with you again back in February and April here in with the new commission, just to give you that background. And again, there was that guidance to come back with an ordinance update and fee resolution that would reflect that approach. So, tonight, we're going to discuss the ordinance that you're going to be considering first here officially tonight, the fee resolution that was attached to the memo. We have that drafted for you all. We'll discuss what we're considering called a group rate that's defined within that fee resolution. And then we're going to discuss a little bit of a an approach with a policy manual resolution to accommodate a request from the Chamber of Commerce, considering there are some existing conferences that are booked, you know, through 2028 that'll be utilizing the conference center in the garage, what that timeline would look like. Also, related, we have some unfunded expenses related to the downtown garage elevator that we want to discuss with you all tonight as well. The ordinance is fairly simple. We've adjusted our parking garage, city-owned parking garage ordinances a few times, mainly because we've made some changes related to Aggieville. Some of those provisions include the requirement of that license plate registration within the systems that we offer today. We did not change that ordinance related to the downtown garage because they didn't have that technology in place and no fees were in place. So, the first kind of step is to approve a first reading of the ordinance that is going to require users who pull into the garage to register within our system, whether it be Park Mobile or PayStation. And also, the only minor change there is it removes kind of the 48-hour rule that we used to have in the downtown garage. Now that it'd be pay-to-park, the the fees and however much you paid to park would apply as opposed to that 48-hour rule. And that would, all of this is kind of in line to go into effect in August as it's proposed today. The fee resolution, upon approval of the first reading of the ordinance tonight, we would have you adopt that along with second reading on June 4th. This hourly rate structure kind of mirrors how we originally approached the Aggieville garage a few years ago. The commission was comfortable with first two hours free, and that is, of course, with registration. So, when you pull into the garage, you'd have to register your license plate, whether that be with the Park Mobile app or the PayStation. Two hours thereafter with a max daily rate of $10. The resolution establishes what we're calling a group rate, which I'm going to define here a little bit more, but that's a cheaper rate at $5 because we understand that there's a large influx of people coming into the garage. And then we do have provisions in there related to permits and reserve stalls that mirror Aggieville, as well as the ability for the Parking Services Manager to set a kind of one-time promotional premium rate in the event that there is a big thing happening downtown. And those fees would also go into effect August 1st as well. So, the group rate, we define it broadly where if a group of at least five people are going to be parking in the garage, they can approach the Parking Services Manager within 14 days of that event prior to that start, and they could establish that group rate so that they could get that decrease as opposed to the $10 daily rate. And then that agreement would stipulate how that cost would be paid. The individual or the group applying for that rate could pay in advance, or they could pass that rate along to the users. I have two flowcharts here with very small text that I'm going to describe to you so you can kind of understand the two options. The payment upfront, so, you know, generally, a conference, a hotel, the CVB or another group, I'm going to call them the entity, they're going to approach, like I said, Parking Services to get that group rate. They're going to submit that form. On that form, they're going to talk about the event. All right, this is a two-day event, and we have 100 people who are coming who are going to use that garage. So, the entity could pay upfront $1,000 for the group rate parking upon completion of that agreement. So, that is two days, 100 people parking at $5 rate, that's where you get the $1,000 right there. What would then happen is Adrian, on the back end of our our Park Mobile and IPS system that uses our license plate recognition, she would create a code for the event, ABC Summit 2024. People would pull into the garage, they would pull up their Park Mobile app, or they could go to the PayStation, they could pick how long they're going to park, and then there's an option, instead of using your credit card, you can just enter in that so many-digit code, and then parking is free. You'd be charged $0 for that.
I just have a question I have to ask on this to Adrian. This is the same system the university uses?
Yes, it's the similar technology. The they also use Park Mobile. They use what's called a reservation system, though. I'm looking at using promo codes. So, it's you.
Yeah, because I can't do that there. I have to go into a website and not the app.
I was going to mention that. You can't put in the university codes through the app.
Yeah.
Got to go through your web browser, which is kind of confusing.
Which a number of us has paid when we didn't have to because of that.
No, I I plan on making it much more simple than that.
Okay, great.
It'll be it'll be even a shorter promo code than what's given in the example for people as well.
Okay, but this because that was a concern we had because we knew we wanted to do this, and they were telling us, no, you can't do this, so, okay.
I don't know, it'll be a simple promo code they enter in on on the app. Yeah, very simple.
I think one of the differences that Adrian identified early on when talking with Park Mobile about this and what K-State does is she mentions reservations. So, if you go in like you do at K-State online, you are secured a stall. A stall will be there because you have reserved it through that system. The promo code, this option does indicate that in the event that the garage is full, right, and you pull in and there's no parking stall, just because you have the code available, if there aren't any parking stalls, you're going to have to find other parking. We don't anticipate that because so we're using this promo code option.
Correct.
Where you're not having a reserved stall.
We still didn't have a reserved stall there either.
A reserved stall in the sense that they wouldn't allow people to park in the garage because these 20 stalls in in the entire system are reserved for this group.
Because they've got those signs when you go in, whether or not it's open or closed.
Correct.
And, yeah, they'll, yeah.
And the and and by them doing reservations for large events, especially when their garage does fill up, it allows them to to know ahead of time how many spaces they need to take out of that population to accommodate that event. That's not an issue that we have because the conference center attendees are the event. They're they're our only customers.
And this still will allow, if the public happens to get there first, they can still use the garage if they want to, and they're just, I I'm sorry to your conference attendees, you can't use the garage, which which is the way it is now.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that'd be a good problem to have if we ever get 400, 500 people parking.
And for the record, I don't see that happening.
So, the other option is the user rate, same process, that entity, a conference, the hotel, the CVB, they're approaching the city for that group rate, they're filling out that form, identifying the same number of spaces, the number of days of the event, they complete that agreement. A person who is attending that conference is provided a code, you know, Adrian's going to provide that entity the code so that they can distribute it to the 100 people coming to their conference. They pull in, submit that code, then they pay $5 there. But they know because they're putting in that code, they're getting the $5 charge instead of the $10 charge that the general public would. Any questions just related to the fee resolution and these two approaches before I move on to the CVB item?
Can we allow these two to happen at the same, like, when the entity is making this agreement with the city, can they pick either one, or do we have to pick one?
No, it it's up to them.
Okay.
Yeah, the entity may want to cover that cost with their registration and all that stuff, or they may just say that's not worth the hassle, we're going to pass it on to the user, and they'll pay when they get there.
Great, thanks.
That's up to them.
So, if we do the payment upfront, then we know we have the $5, right? I mean, what happens if I come and I like, when I go to conventions in Kansas City, I have an option of, you know, valet parking, or I can park where it doesn't cost anything, and I usually do that. I mean, what happens if people just come in and park at the Hilton?
If they, if if an individual who's attending the, that's up to the entity to to let us know how many people they think are going to park in the garage.
The first thing will ensure that we have their dollars, even if they choose not to park there, come with six other people.
So, the second option, we're not necessarily missing out on on anything. We're going to get the payment of the number of people that park in the garage.
I mean, I just, yeah.
You you might have said it, but just a follow-up because you have this payment upfront. So, if they pay for a certain amount and they're not used, we just keep the money? Do they get a refund? Because a lot of things like this work, you pay whatever gets used. Do we, does it work that way, or does it work if you pay for it? Doesn't matter how many people use it, you've already paid and that's it?
Yes, it'll be up to the entity organizer to give an accurate estimate of how many promo codes at that discounted rate that they'll they'll use. And whatever is is paid for is is paid for.
It it'd be paid upfront. We don't want to get into the invoicing business, so after the fact.
No, I can understand. I could see, I could see where people.
Or something like that.
Won't like that as much because it's like they want to make sure everyone's covered, but they just don't want to pay for nothing either.
So, the Chamber of Commerce did submit a request. That letter was also attached in the memo. You know, they were voicing support for the approach of hourly rates and group rates. One thing that they asked the city commission to consider was either a delayed implementation date of January 1, 2025, so that they could talk to conferences and people that they work with and come back with more considerations and recommendations for the city commission to consider, or providing some type of financial assistance, understanding that there are conferences that are already booked from 2024 through 2028 that have the understanding that parking is currently free in the garage. We would not recommend delaying implementation mainly due to all of the costs that we have facing the garage that we need to start funding today over the next five years and unfunded things that occur later. I'm going to talk about a couple hundred thousand dollars in elevator expenses that we have not collected rates on to build cash reserves to pay for something like that. A few years ago, we updated our exit signs. That was tens of thousands of dollars that came out of the general fund because we don't charge for parking in the downtown garage. A few years before that, we updated all of the lighting in the downtown garage, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars. Again, that came out of the general fund because we were, we did not have a parking fund that was charging for parking. So, we don't want to delay that implementation so that we can start collecting revenue to help paying for that capital program to improve the garage over the next five years and starting that as quick as we can. If you're, if the commission is willing to, you know, entertain the chamber's request to provide that financial assistance, we'd recommend a policy manual resolution, you know, the the state statute that provides what transient guest taxes can use would allow for the city to establish a program that promotes tourism and and the use of people coming into the community. So, this would fall within that. But we would want to create a policy manual resolution that's approved by you all, that would establish kind of the criteria for that program where the city could administer TGT funds to offset some of those group rates in downtown. This is a possible approach, looking for for feedback from the commission. One thing to to be mindful of is that these policies need to kind of be neutral in in what the criteria that you're setting forth. We we can't have too narrow of a focus on what who these TGT funds can be used for. So, we created a a criteria that is kind of listed out. A group is having an event, you know, in downtown, likely the conference center because it's connected to the downtown garage. You know, we've had conversations with the chamber and CVB related to a qualifying criteria would be an event that's two or more days, meaning people are coming to Manhattan, staying the night, staying in hotels, paying transient guest tax, which is actually being put back into the fund that we're using to offset. And then we would need to budget annually transient guest tax funds during each budget year to have enough funds to, you know, make this program possible. Right now, there is a healthy balance in the TGT fund, so we would be able to facilitate this approach. We would evaluate submissions to this program on a kind of a first-come, first-served basis, and we budget those funds annually. I I note in the the memo, it's a little bit hard for us right now to determine how many people are going to park for the year of the the remainder of August 1 through December 31 of 2024. CVB and the Hilton have identified 35 conferences that are going to be multi-day events that are going to be occurring and would likely utilize this program. From a minimum estimate approach, you know, we were estimating $25,000. That's just based on room nights of people they're anticipating that are staying in hotels in this area. That could be a lot higher because they could have people staying in rooms that are, you know, not associated with the hotel. And then we spanned it all the way to like, it was $115,000 estimate if every attendee that was coming to the conference parked in the garage and brought a vehicle, which also isn't likely. So, we have this kind of broad range, but we do know within that range, TGT funds are available.
Again, trying to remember, we were talking about this before. Didn't it come up that the Hilton was doing their own charge for parking? Was that on both conferences and just people staying regularly?
Yes.
So, if that's the the case, then these conferences were getting a charge, you know, before. And it also brings up the question, if we were to prove all that, we don't want to prove it to just have the Hilton go charging, again, to subsidize.
And they've already been charging for people to use our garage.
Our under, what the Hilton said at the last work session that they were at was that they would charge, they charge a $10 parking fee for people who park in their lot. That's what they said. I don't know how that practice. I don't know how that practice works, if, how that works during checkout, but that, yes, that's what they said. So this program, I have another size-two font timeline to go over with you. Similar approach though, this group is going to come to Adrian and the city just to make sure that, first of all, they qualify for this program. If they do qualify for this program and the group rate can be offset through TGT, they're going to go through a similar process. Approach for the group rate, utilizing the program. They're going to submit, again, the same number, number of spaces they need, number of days. We are going to create a code. In this instance, because we're taking money from a city TGT fund to a parking services fund, the user, again, doesn't have to pay upfront. So say a hundred people pull up and they use that code on day one, and the same hundred people pull up and use that code on day two, we do a calculation after the conference of, okay, a hundred people use the code on day one, a hundred people use it on day two, that was a thousand dollars worth of group rates that we would transfer from the TGT fund to the parking services fund.
How's that work from a practical standpoint? Is just for someone's coming for a cookware conference? They could be staying at any of the hotels that are there, but still utilizing the garage. So it's for, it's really just contracted with, who's ever establishing the conference and then they're paying upfront with?
So Adrian's going to work with, whether it's the CVB or, you know, the chair of that conference, and they're going to give them that code so that they can distribute it to whoever.
Independent of all the hotels that are there, it'll be done that way.
And one thing that is important to note is our system is set up to have in and out privileges. So say you pull into the garage and pay your five dollars, or you use a promo code to get free parking because it's already been paid for in some way, and you pay for the full day, it allows you to go in and out of the garage throughout the day and it doesn't end your time or restart it. So the policy manual, based on, you know, your feedback, we would, we would come back with that on June fourth as well. We already have a draft outline that we could have prepared for you. And that policy manual resolution will set forth the funds that would be available for twenty twenty-four. Each year in the budgeting approach, so this summer, when we're creating the twenty twenty-five budget, we would do an analysis of how much TGT funds we think will be requested and base it off of, again, how much TGT is available in the fund to support the program.
So what possibly the easiest thing be to just tell conventioneers that if they wish to park in the Hilton, you know, outside parking lot, it will be a ten dollar fee. If it's parked in the parking garage, it's a five dollar fee. If they park at the Holiday Inn Express, it's free. I mean, it seems to me, at this point, with all kinds of contracts with people coming in, it would be easier just to tell them to put that, I mean, five dollars is not really the end of the world. If you park, you know, on the Plaza someplace to, you know, Marriott, for example, it's significantly more than that. I think somehow we should make it as simple as possible. And if we need to subsidize contracts that are really very firm or something, then I would say we could take it out of the transient guest tax. But, you know, we somehow have neglected the parking structure for many years and we're kind of in a pit here. We've got to fix it.
This is certainly an approach that we developed for you all to consider in reaction to the chamber's request. So we're looking for your feedback on whether you narrow or broaden that criteria like you're talking about.
I think it'd be hard for the chamber, and you probably want to come forward, to say to groups, you know, here's the price we gave you, now it's going to be a thousand dollars more for parking. I think it'd be easier for them to say, give them the parking options. And they can park on Colorado Street for nothing, you know, I mean, that's just.
Yeah, and I'm sure the Hilton, along with the CVB, and they'll probably talk about that during their opportunity to, they work with these groups, they work closely, they give them all the options. Marcia's working with them on where's the best place to eat, everything so that their experience in Manhattan is perfect and that they come back.
Jason, I want to, well, maybe you're going to come up to it again. I mean, I just want to go back to what we're, this range that we've, that you've mentioned in terms of what this might cost. You said twenty-five thousand to a hundred and fifteen thousand, is that correct, for five months? So.
Based on thirty-five conferences that are multi-day conferences.
So quick back of the envelope is extending that out to twelve months. We're talking an upper limit of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Not just a hundred and fifteen. What do you think is going, two questions. So I presume, is it correct that money coming from the TGT cannot be used to maintain the garage?
No, it could, and we're proposing to use it here later in slides to maintain the elevator. That supports the conference center, which is tourism related.
Right, okay. So, but, so my question is, if I can say this, what, what would we take in, in five months in the garage at ten dollars a day versus what we are offering to the chamber as a concession? I mean, are we taking in twenty-five thousand dollars a month in that garage?
No.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around what do we get out of, you know, it's, I can see the benefit, I can appreciate that these conferences have already been told something regarding their parking. I understand wanting to stay, you know, have a goodwill exchange with companies downtown. But are we giving away a whole lot of money that we could be using to fix the elevator and put in the license plate readers and fix the exit signs and make sure that sweet sweepers or street sweepers are in there on a regular basis and a lot of other things?
Yeah, this approach takes existing funds that can be used for tourism-related items and uses it to offset parking for conferences. The commission has the ability to, to take that approach and limit it, that number. So your example of three hundred thousand dollars potentially, if there are sixty conferences next year in twenty twenty-five that are all eyeing for this, you don't have, the commission doesn't have to budget that amount. They can say, we're only going to give away fifty, pick the, you know, have those groups come, first come, first serve of the conferences that they want to fund versus all of them. That's something that the commission has the discretion to do as well, to limit that. It doesn't, if we adopt a policy manual resolution, it doesn't mean that unlimited funds are available. That's something that the city has the authority to budget.
So I got two things. First, I hear what you're saying, Susan, because I imagine most of the parking use in that garage right now is from conferences. Would you agree? So.
And events. And events in the conference center or events downtown.
Right.
But a lot of the events are.
In Blue Earth Park.
Right, or nighttime galas or events held at the conference, which would be post.
But if they're, if they're not two-day events, then we would not, they would, according to this, they would not be eligible.
A wedding would probably.
Right. So I see what you're saying, is that like, are we actually getting any benefit? Or are we, you know, robbing Peter to pay parking? And, you know, and that, that really, you know, it's kind of what it, what it looks like from here. Is it possible or legal to limit this to only conferences that are currently under contract? And, and would that be amenable to the chamber? Because, you know, if they're not under contract, then that's, they're not under contract, they have not agreed to any free parking at this point.
We, we wouldn't recommend limiting the scope of this program to a specific group when, frankly, contracts that the Hilton or someone has with an event, and it states complimentary parking in there, that authority was never there to begin with, it's not their garage.
Right, okay.
So there are, you know, groups who, around there who would, who would say, yeah, parking's free in the garage, but they don't control the garage, the city controls the garage and the use of it. But we don't have any, that's, that's not our problem, I guess, we didn't put that in those contracts.
Now, does.
And didn't give that authority.
Do we have contracts? Like, does CVB have contracts with, yeah?
Mayor, commissioners, I'm Marcia Rosell, Director of Visit Manhattan, it's a Department of the Chamber of Commerce. So I'd love to address these questions, and I want to say Jared and Adrian have been great to work with, as well as Brad and Katie down at the Hilton Garden Inn, to give us some details so that we can address this. One thing I want to start with is an oversight on my part, where the Chamber of Commerce had an or, that powerful little word, should have been an and. So we are asking that actually the delayed implementation until January and the financial assistance to those that are under contract with the Hilton.
See, that was my other question, I was going to say, let's just delay it till January and we don't have to worry about it anyways.
So there are contracts right now that are under contract with the Hilton, with, with conferences that have complimentary parking. And I would request that we honor those contracts with TGT dollars to be paid for, for those contracts. And that's why the timeframe of twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight is in there, because that's about the duration. Any contracts moving forward have the prevailing rate in the parking garage in the contract. So as we move forward, that prevailing rate can be three options. One, it can be paid by the user, it could be paid by the conference, or it could be paid by TGT based on it's a group, it's a group we don't want to lose the business in Manhattan. And those would be on an individual basis, and it could be vetted out with the CVB as well as the city. But Jared is absolutely correct. In the numbers that we've run, we think that for the August to December rate would be about twenty-five thousand to a hundred and fifteen thousand if everybody used the code. And I think there's a lot of things that are still speculative, right? So Adrian creates a code, we get it to the planner, she, the planner expects a hundred people, only fifty of them read their email, only if fifty of them use their code, the rest of them are going to pay the ten dollar rate, and you're never even going to know that they were there with the conference because they didn't use the code.
Well, and then, you know, you've got groups of people traveling, you know, in one vehicle, so that's.
Right, so even if they expect a hundred people, there might only be seventy-five vehicles that park in the garage.
That's why the max estimate is unrealistic, but we want to paint that for you just to know that there are that many people attending those conferences. But yeah, you could, you could carpool, you could, people could only show up for a day and leave town. All those things, they may not stay the full three days of a three-day conference, they may only be there for two days, all those things come into play.
We also know that, sorry.
Yeah, is it clear to people that if I park in the parking structure with my code, I only pay five bucks? And if I park other, you know, at the.
Well, we would, we would educate people in both signage and digital information that we pass to the.
Well, then if we can educate them that way, I think that they would not make the mistake of not, you know, I mean.
Kind of up to the conference, I think.
A lot of that is conference organizers and how they communicate with their participants.
I'd be sort of sad if I were talking to somebody else at the conference and they said to me, I park for five dollars and I, I mean, see, I don't think the five dollars is that big of a jump. I, you know, we all know conferences are.
If I may, we do, with Park Mobile specifically, we do have an option to where if somebody opens up Park Mobile, they're a part of a conference, they don't realize that there's a rate or a promo code out there, I can have a pop-up message come up as soon as they select the garage. Are you attending a conference in the area? Do you have your promo code? You know, or something to that effect, letting them know before they do register their vehicle that, if they, you know, are part of a conference, they should have a promo code. And that language can also be in signage at each of the pay stations as well.
So I imagine we've got a pretty, there's a tale of conferences.
Correct.
I mean, there's probably, we probably have one conference booked in twenty twenty-eight, I imagine.
Possibly.
So, you know, the bulk of this would probably be the rest of this year, next year, and then it'll start to taper off, right?
The transition, correct.
Yeah, and like you said, if we can, if we can, if we can just limit this to the conferences that are under contract already, I, I think that kind of minimize, you know, it, we would have the bulk of it, you know, this year, the rest of this year into next year, but I think it would start to minimize and then start to see some return on that. Just my thought.
To that point, I mentioned why we wouldn't put that in the criteria of, you know, if you have an existing contract with the Hilton or someone else that says complimentary parking, we wouldn't recommend putting that in the policy or manual resolution. But we would budget, we would work with the CVB to understand how much money would, would be available in an annual year based on what their, what their expectations are of the conferences that they're going to be approaching the city for, and then it'd be the onus on them.
Marcia, how would this impact the TVG, TVGT budget? You know, you have, you have expenses for a lot of things.
So to be clear, we're talking about the reserve funds of the TGT that the city holds.
Okay.
We're not talking about the budget that the CVB has under contract.
Thank you.
Okay.
So Jared, are you saying that we would kind of leave it up to the CVB to filter out those? And like you said, you would put in the next, the new contracts after we, you know, after we pass this, the new contracts would just say, here's how much parking costs? And we would not offer that to, to them, or?
I, I would like the option that there's going to be some conferences that we want to attract here, that this might be a possibility to have a sponsorship, right? This could be, if, if they, you know, if parking is such an issue for them, we could offer a thousand dollars or whatever the amount would be to cover their costs for parking. But it would be on a limited basis, it wouldn't be open to anybody. It would be the ones that, in my opinion, are, we're trying to attract them here for the first time. They're, you know, a big regional group, something like that. But some of you have made the comment that a five dollar rate is not going to deter some of the people from attending.
I feel that's a little bit of a nod and wink, you know, or a handshake agreement. Would that be not necessarily codified? I don't mean so strictly, you know, how would we, how would that policy continue absent your knowledge of how conferences have been attracted here in the past?
Great question. As we transition and as we have more groups under contract, we would be addressing, we would like the conference to pay for it or the individual to pay for it, and it would not be known that there's that sponsorship dollars out there. And then that might be the time where it is on our budget to use those as sponsorship dollars.
Commissioners, are there any other comments or questions?
I think we need to make a decision.
A few more slides I'll run through.
I'm sorry, sorry, sorry.
It's quick, just from a timeline perspective. We have already purchased the LPR equipment, the commission authorized that in April. Those are going to be installed and programmed over the next couple of months. First reading tonight of the ordinance. And if approved, second reading fee resolution and the policy manual resolution would be in front of you, June fourth. Staff would need to take some time to just develop those standard agreements that parking services will administer, and then those rates, again, would go into effect. I did want to cover two, the downtown garage elevator. This has been in operation since the garage opened. Uh, this has been in operation since, uh, the garage opened thirteen years ago. The elevator had a, a standard life expectancy of fifteen years for that apparatus, I guess you could say. Um, it, it's considered an obsolete status, um, through our elevator service provider. We have a contract with an elevator service provider who services all of our elevators across the city. Uh, but because of, uh, just the, the age of the equipment and the wear and tear on it, it, it is obsolete, so it's not under warranty. And we did have, uh, there's been a new state inspections, uh, system that every five years, I believe, our, uh, our elevators are, are inspected by the state. It failed its inspection, so it's been out of service since April fourth. Uh, bare minimum, we have a hundred to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in upgrades to the brake system and the traction belt that would be required. If we did those fixes, it would still remain in obsolete status, so we wouldn't, uh, it wouldn't be under warranty. But then there's a full modernization that we could do of the, the elevator to make it last another fifteen to twenty years. Um, and it would be removed from obsolete status, so anything, any hiccups that would occur with the elevator would be covered under warranty with our service provider. And that is something that, um, was an unexpected expense that we would recommend, uh, using T G T funds for, given that the balance is there. And that it services the, the Hilton Conference Center and our guests coming to the community. So, tonight, looking for feedback on, on these three areas, approval of the ordinance, the fee resolution, the policy manual resolution, and then concurrence with you all, and we come back at a future meeting with a contract to service that elevator.
What's the average cost of going to a conference in Manhattan? I mean.
Oh, it, it varies on what.
Yeah, what's presented, but I mean, like, the hotel rooms are usually a hundred dollars.
Hundred and fifty to a hundred dollars.
Okay.
At, at the Hilton, I mean, there's other properties.
And the room rentals, I mean, so. Five dollars just really doesn't seem to break the bank to me. I mean, I just, I think there might be a few people whose noses are slightly out of joint, but I just really don't think people even have a second thought about it. I mean, you're so used to paying for things like that. And if they have all these options, five dollars in our place and ten dollars, you know, I mean, and if they're over the Holiday Inn Express, it's free, I mean. I just can't imagine people would really even think twice.
I, I think it's changed.
Free parking, but I, you know, I still think that's.
Complimentary, yeah. I, I think it's changed, and so I think people will adjust.
It's kind of like the, the parking we did at the airport.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I really thought people might drive to Kansas City. They didn't. I'm glad, but, I mean, um, they just said, oh, that's part of the, you know. But on the other hand, uh, I think that the, the tourist money, really, you all should be sort of driving that. I mean, because you know what, what the costs are and what the needs are and that kind of thing. But we really have got to fix this parking structure, or we'll have somebody fall through it.
Plus, I imagine it's been out of A D A compliance for the last month, if, if people can't use the elevator from the second or third level.
We did add additional, sorry, A D A stalls on the first floor. Um, we added two more with, um, hashed mark spaces next to them for accessibility vehicles.
Thank you.
Um, I had a quick, uh, just a practical question. Um, for the, you said we're gonna remove the forty-eight hour rule for the garages. Um, now, I imagine that's because now it's fee enforced, right? Do we have, will we, will we include a provision for when a vehicle will be towed? Uh, because I imagine it, it's, uh, for like an abandoned vehicle, for instance, right? Um, yes, they can keep racking up ten dollar a day fees, but at some point, we've got to recognize that that car hasn't moved in two weeks or so, or what, and nobody's gonna pay that, you know, uh, a hundred and forty dollar parking fee.
Jason stepped out at just the best time, because I think towing is his favorite conversation to have, uh, related to city business. I, my understanding is that, um, you know, we can request a tow in the event of, of non-compliance and failure to, in an abandoned vehicle sense, but i- it's the officer's discretion to, to truly authorize that.
And the parking, parking enforcement officer, is it?
The Riley County Police Department.
Okay.
Um, I believe.
Jason, we need you.
I had a question about the forty-eight hour rule and how that will now be enforced in the event of like an abandoned vehicle.
In the garage?
Yeah.
Same way we would do it in Aggieville. I mean, there's rules and regs about leaving your vehicle in the garage itself, separate than the forty-eight hour rule.
Okay, but if somebody wanted to park their car there for three days and then pay thirty dollars, they could.
They could.
Yeah, there's gonna be discretion from the officer based on what's going on.
Okay.
No different than the towing ordinance today. They're always gonna evaluate the site.
But like.
As to whether or not they're gonna authorize the tow.
So, but if, if a parking enforcement, uh, what, are they agents or what, what do they?
They're parking enforcement officers.
Okay.
The forty-eight hour ordinance does not mean that automatically within forty-eight hours a vehicle is towed.
Right.
It means that you're in violation of an ordinance that says you can't leave a vehicle unattended for, in, in the same spot for forty-eight hours.
Okay.
That, a- and then you could receive a ticket.
Okay, got it.
R C P D could issue that ticket, parking enforcement officer could issue that ticket because you're violating the forty-eight hour rule. We're removing that, so the new rule in the downtown garage, just like in Aggieville, if you pull in and you fail to register, you could receive a ticket. If you park in there for, and pay to park there for a day, but you leave it there for an extra day, you haven't paid to park, so you have, again, failed to comply with the ordinance related to those two structures now, and you can continue to receive those tickets if you fail to comply.
Okay.
And then the steps are taken to, okay, this has been here seven days, we're gonna call R C P D and see if we can get this towed.
And typically, what we have done, um, we just had an instance of this happen in the Aggieville garage where, um, somebody parked their garage, parked their vehicle on a Thursday night, they received a ticket, Friday they received a ticket, Saturday noticed the vehicle was still there, on Sunday. And on Monday, we contacted R C P D, um, ju- just to contact the registered owner and ask, you know, what was going on.
Yeah.
Right, because we also saw on security camera, um, you know, a young woman leaving her vehicle, and I looked at the vehicle, I found her purse was in the car, and we got a little worried, so, you know, we always opt to call R C P D and do wellness checks and check up on the registered owners before we even consider towing.
She okay?
She's fine.
Okay, good.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's good. Uh, I appreciate that, thank you.
So, where are we?
You can, you know, open up the Florida public comment. Uh, I, I think based on, you know, our initial discussions, we were in agreement with the approaches on the, the ordinance and the fee resolution, and those terms, really looking for feedback on if you want us to pursue finalizing that policy manual resolution for your consideration. And then if, i- if you do have concurrence on us, uh, using T G T funds for the elevator, we're gonna try and get that serviced as quick as possible. That is a long, uh, a few weeks, uh, to make all those fixes, but we want to get that in operation as quick as possible.
So, you're going to fix it, or you're gonna buy a new one?
No, it, the, the elevator would remain the same. Our elevator service contractor, they would replace the brakes, replace the belts, replace the, you know, the mechanical system within it. It'd be the same elevator, but all of that work would cost that two hundred thousand dollars, and that would take a few weeks. And we also need to get a contract with them and get your approval to do that and get that on a commission agenda.
And that would renew the warranty by briefly?
If we do the expensive one, the, the two hundred thousand dollar.
If you do the, what's called the full modernization, it would remove it from obsolete status.
Well, I think you have concurrence on that.
Okay.
We can have people falling out of the elevator.
Yeah, I, I, I think, and getting a warranty is probably, uh, the best, because I would hate to, you know, spend a hundred thousand dollars, and then six months later, something else breaks, and then we gotta spend another hundred grand, so, um.
All right, are there any public comments? Members of the public that have signed up in person at, on the list before the meeting, we'll go first. Any other members of the public in the audience may stand and be recognized. Do I, do I need to, if no one is standing, do I? Okay, I don't see anyone standing, so, uh, I will close public comments. Does city staff have any final comments? No, okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
I guess I'm still kind of a, a little concerned about lim, the limits on the, who we're going to, um, potentially provide those T G T funds for their parking. Um, is that something we have to decide tonight, or are you looking for just guidance for that P M R that we would then vote on?
What do you mean by limits, Commissioner?
Well, um, so, you know, we, we talked about like, okay, the people that are under contract are expecting free parking, but if somebody comes in and calls C V B tomorrow, or, or wants to write a contract, um, you know, tomorrow after we've approved this first reading, their, their contract would say, by the way, parking is five dollars. Is, is that what I'm, okay, and?
My understanding is that the, the C V B and the Hilton are using language in their contracts for future contracts that say users will pay the prevailing rate wi- within the garage.
Okay. So, that's our, that's already in your language? Great. That's easy then, okay.
But what you said is, you don't want that as part of the policy management review, you're just gonna do it on your own after we do a policy management review?
No, th- that relationship is between the, the Hilton or the C V B and that conference. W- we don't control what their con, their contract says.
Are they gonna get any transient guest tax to pay for any of that?
That's up to the entity to approach us when, if this policy is, is passed to request it, and then we're gonna use that criteria that we discussed, which is if it's a multi-day conference.
Will that criteria be in the, that?
In the policy manual resolution, yes.
So, it will be in the P M R?
Yes.
Okay.
That criteria would be, yeah.
Do you have a question?
I'm totally confused.
How can we un-confuse you?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, that, that, you, we, we shouldn't move forward if you're still confused.
We're gonna provide that draft on, on June fourth. If you're all comfortable with it, you all can approve it. If you all have questions and revisions that you want us to make, we can, you can table that item, and we can make those revisions, and we can come back on June eighteenth. That isn't necessarily important because fr- from a timeline perspective, we have more time to develop that and work through it. The main thing we need to know, and Adrian needs to know, is are, are you gonna be charging rates, and at what cost, so she can get the, those things ready? So, on June fourth, we're, we're certainly wanting the second reading and the fee resolution approved so that we can move forward. But, yeah, if during that meeting there are questions, or you want to work through the criteria more, we can talk about those things on June fourth, and we can come back with an updated policy manual resolution after you've seen it.
I apologize for being sort of dense. Hey, does the Hilton, uh, Garden, are the Hilton charged for parking when, on campus? Or the Marriott?
No, no. The other hotels on, by campus? No.
Okay, okay. Well, um, you know, I think we should definitely go forward with all this and, um, listen to the.
Do you want to make a motion?
No, you do it.
Is there a motion for the commission? And? Go ahead.
Uh, I will move that we approve first reading of an ordinance amending section thirty-one dash thirty-seven and section thirty-one dash one oh eight of the Court of Ordinances related to city-owned parking garages.
Second.
All right, any comments or discussion? Peter Opel made the motion, and Commissioner Mata seconded the motion. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Adam Jack?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. All right, we're now, and, uh, taking up item, uh, nine C on the general agenda. Consider discussing funding for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, this evening, we wanted to, uh, give you an update and provide you an overview of a, a financial approach, uh, for the next several years as it pertains to park and recreation, and really circling back to the general fund discussions we've had, both at your retreat in January and an overview we provided back in February. We recognize that the general fund is a major operating fund for the city. Multiple departments are located within that fund. It's where the majority of the people outside of the utilities, our contractual services, our commodities are paid for. Uh, park and rec, roughly about a third of the general fund. Uh, we wanted to explore some future funding options. Uh, we're looking at a twenty-year approach in, in the presentation we have for you this evening. These are scenarios, these are ideas and concepts, trying to reach a financial position as a municipality, not only today, but setting us up for how we want to function in the future. As I mentioned, we've been talking with you, uh, for several years about where we are financially, and we, it's led to some conversations about realizing where we are with the mill levy and property taxes. Uh, we've been fairly constant and flat in the city's mill levy and its support for the general fund for a number of years. Uh, I know that can be confusing to the taxpayer, uh, given the fifteen mills that support the city of Manhattan's operations under your control, under administration's control, is not the same forty-eight point nine mills that the city levies. The city levies mill, mills for not only our operations, but for Riley County Police Departments, the libraries, and, and it all gets, uh, accumulated into a much higher amount. Then you have the school districts' mill levy, the Riley County mill levy, which comprised of really the hundred and fifty mills that are, that are about our community. So, I know the taxpayers, I know the citizens in Manhattan, uh, oftentimes have a hard time really fully grasping where their taxes are going and why, but we can reiterate and show you data of, of just where the mill levy has been in support of the general fund. We've operated around five or six mills, uh, for quite some time. Back in February, we talked about a two-phased approach. We've recognized the interest in the continued topic of indoor aquatics in our community. We recognized internally that paying for the operations associated with that in the future are as important, if not more important, than the actual construction of the facility itself. We structured a, a conversation back in February of approaching indoor aquatics at two different elections in twenty twenty-four, trying to nail down the operational side of indoor aquatics and park and rec in that August primary, and then looking to see the results of that before you would actually place something on the November general election that would be more about constructing that indoor aquatics facility. We recognize the complexity of that, uh, it's confusing. Uh, some folks would feel like they voted on indoor aquatics in August, not realizing it was just the opposite, and reapproaching them with another question, uh, in the general election would become confusing. We started d- thinking through a process to actually combine them, um, and, and opt not really waiting for a result of one question to hinge on whether or not we ask the next one. This is, uh, this is an approach to try to simplify that. Obviously, Move M H K is moving as well right now. There's a lot of study, uh, results and, and stakeholder meetings. Um, but we recognize, if we're gonna move forward with indoor water in the future, we would like to set ourselves up financially to do that. Running an indoor aquatics facility is very expensive. I think Aaron has alluded to some of those, uh, year-round expenses to you all before. You'd be looking at a million plus in, uh, net cost to the city once an indoor aquatics facility is open. Our approach has really been about, for the past several years, solidifying the funding for the general fund. At the same time, as I mentioned, we're getting a lot of feedback and a lot of interest in an indoor aquatics. The nine departments that we have in the city that are in the general fund, uh, eight of them, um, are part of that, and forty-five million dollars was our budget for twenty twenty-four. We spent about thirty-nine million in twenty twenty-three. We have over eighty revenue streams that come into the general fund, uh, the jet, the part, the, uh, general fund, six mills supports it from a property tax perspective, so about four point two million of the thirty-nine million that was needed to, to operate. So about four point two million of the thirty-nine million that was needed to, to operate in, uh, 2023 came from property taxes. A majority of what we run on i- is comprised of sales tax. We have a one percent permanent tax that generates roughly fifteen million dollars for the city. Uh, and that's combining it with not only, uh, that, that sales tax rate, but also the compensating use for those sales that take place outside the community, but they're delivered here in Manhattan. And then we do get a share of Riley County's sales tax based on our population evaluation of the community. We recognized and I've shared with you all several times of just where we budgeted and what we spent. Uh, we clearly budgeted an amount and we spent an amount. And then we realized from a revenue standpoint, just, uh, and accounting purposes. We didn't overspend our budget. We had the authority to spend the thirty-nine million dollars. But typically, we, we try to operate within where the revenue streams are at. Obviously, with one-time money coming in from ARPA and our cash balances reaching close to sixteen million dollars, beginning fund balance for 2023, we knew we had room. We built a vehicle and an equipment replacement fund. We built a very robust capital improvement fund. And we obviously implemented our, uh, personnel pay study first time, full year, 2023. Twenty twenty-two, those change, those changes to the, the personnel, um, funding was, was modified, but the first full year of impact on that pay study for our personnel was in 2023. We also recognized during our strategic meetings with the commission, not only our retreat in January, but in February, we can't keep over, uh, we can't keep spending more than our revenues bring in and expect to keep a healthy cash balance. We've targeted that cash balance and it's something that we've come to grips with. We've been operating for the first five months of this year in, in a healthy fashion. But we are not replacing vehicles and equipment and we're not standing up an IT department like we anticipated or at least forecasted in last year's budget, uh, hearings. Park and Recreation, moving into, uh, the, the different topics within the general fund. The actuals that we experienced in 2023 in the department were ten point eight million dollars. They brought in two point six million in revenues. So the operating subsidy was just over eight million dollars. So you see the budget in 2024 growing to twelve point eight million dollars. The next slide just kind of shows you the general fund snapshot. I wanted to highlight again that sixteen million dollars at the end of twenty-two is a cash balance. You start the year with that, you run through your expenses, we ended the year just over eleven million dollars. That's that difference between thirty-nine million expenses and the net between fifty million and sixteen, which is around thirty-three. So we, we spent into that cash balance, uh, paying for our people, paying for our equipment, paying for our vehicles and operating. That's a challenge moving forward. That cash balance, um, from a recommendation needs to, to hang around the ten, eleven million dollar mark. It's a number that rating agencies and debt is, is factored upon. Um, yes, our total debt is part of that analysis, but our cash balances in the utility funds, our general fund, our bond and interest fund, which is where our debt is, even our economic development funds, those cash balances are very, very important in the analysis of just where we are rated and how that bonds, how that debt is actually structured and sold in the public marketplace. So we have a sensitivity. You can see, not too long ago, we were operating at cash balances well under two million. We started increasing them in eighteen and nineteen. Uh, there's factors associated with those, um, that we can get into about how those were growing versus, um, where we were back in seventeen. In twenty twenty and twenty-one and twenty-two, we started seeing federal money as a result of the COVID epidemic. And, and a lot of that money that's sitting there today as a cash balance is one-time money. This isn't sustainable revenue streams that have been coming in. This is one-time money that we just simply haven't spent to date. This is another way of looking at revenues and expenses year to year. We go all the way back to twenty thirteen and you can see the beginning cash balances really hovering around that two million dollar mark until we hit twenty twenty, twenty nineteen. You can also see the property taxes that were supporting the general fund hovering right around one point seven, one point nine, two point one. The two point eight to three point two jump in this twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen area were primarily because of the security we had to start providing out at the airport. And when we increased our plane size and we increased our flights to Chicago and Dallas, it, TSA required more personnel and a twenty-hour operation. We are providing that service essentially from four AM to midnight every day. And we have to be staffed appropriately to keep that commercial air service. So there was a pretty significant property tax increase around that timeframe in order to accomplish that. But since that point in time, again, we've remained very flat in terms of that revenue stream. Sorry. We can get into some of those questions.
Can I ask a quick question?
You bet.
Uh, what happened between twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen?
On the property tax side?
Yeah.
Half a million dollars probably there a- as a, uh, I, I could look more clearly back in those, I'd have to go research that, Commissioner.
Sure.
Um, we were, you know, that's a half million dollars on a, uh, thirty million dollar operation.
Right.
So you're, you're looking at, um...
So that's total property tax revenue for the city?
Yeah.
Is just under four million dollars?
Yes. That's your five and six mills over the years.
Right.
For the general fund.
Oh, to the, just to the general fund?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The other fifteen mills that we have, there's six that go to the general fund.
Got it, got it.
Roughly another five go, four or five go to bond and interest.
Okay.
And then we have, um, a KPNF and employee benefit.
Yeah, 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 all right, yeah. That makes sense.
Yep. But primarily, we, we run on sales tax i- in this fund. And this is, again, just where the majority of our people and, and salaries and, uh, vehicles and equipment are, are located. I provide these just to give a perspective of just sustainability a- as an organization. And again, highlighting that federal money that is sitting there today as a cash balance cushion. And we've just been very reluctant to go below the ten million. The ten million is recognized by not only GFOA, our Government Finance Officers Association, but just a standard that you'll hear about in a couple of weeks, uh, from both our financial advisors and our bond counsel.
But Jason, don't they suggest three months operating and that would be more like nine million?
Three months operating for a community that isn't as dependent on K-State and Fort Riley as we are. Three months of operating on a community that doesn't run ninety percent of their general fund on, uh, sales tax, franchise fees, other fees other than property taxes. You start putting in those caveats to those professionals, they'll increase your balances. When they look at Manhattan and our...
Decrease your costs too. If K-State and Fort Riley went away, all the people would go away. I mean, but generally, bond looks at three months of, you know...
They look at all conditions and they know we're very much
Yes.
a part of K-State and Fort Riley's portfolio, which are dependent on the state and federal government each and every year to fund.
Right.
They're not going to be as reliable as you find in other communities. And you can go look at our rating agency's opinions, they highlight those things as well.
Uh, are you saying that those, those caveats increase the, the, okay, the cash balance?
Yes, they're going to recommend a higher balance.
Got it.
Just because of the swings you can have depending on sales tax the way we do. And again, depending on the students and the soldiers that are at both of those institutions and how much of an impact they are to our economy. And downswings in both of those can seriously impact our revenue streams. And there are years, in our past thirty years, where you can absolutely see it. You can see it in our sales tax flattening in seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen as a direct result of what was going on at K-State.
Even a major deployment is going to take all those soldiers away and that's, yeah.
But I would also add that our extreme indebtedness is one of the things that lowers our bond rating too. We, we have pretty big debt bal- balance, so I just, you know.
We do. And you brought up a subject earlier that's a contributor to that. And that's us out there with special assessments and benefit districts, putting in infrastructure that allows our home builders and our developers to press, uh, the housing market probably a little bit different than other communities can. If those folks are required to go get the two to three million dollar loans to put in the twenty to thirty single-family residential subdivision infrastructure, that may slow things down a little bit. That's, that's always been the argument, Commissioner, in the past. You know, we, we can invite, we can invite the developers and builders in the room, which we've done multiple times and have had these conversations. I, if we want to switch, we switch. But that, that topic is going to be one that has impacts to this community well beyond where we're at from a seventy, eighty million dollar indebtedness on special assessments.
I don't necessarily want to switch, I just want it to be clear what, what, what our debt's made up of. And as you said, if Fort Riley and K-State went away, we would have an awful lot of sewers and things that belong to the city with nobody living in the houses next to them, so, you know.
Sure. We're, we're very dependent on that, those two groups. And again, we, we've seen the, the ups and downswings of both of those institutions impacting our economy. No doubt. We drafted a sales tax question and this is, again, to try to address getting at additional sales tax to help not only the general fund, but if we're going to react and sustain some sort of effort towards indoor water, we are very adamant that we address the operating side of this. We have done some things in the past that have put us in a position and commissions in a position where we look at what it's going to take to operate that facility. We all agree on what it would take to operate that facility. But when it comes to executing that strategy, we have struggled. We have struggled politically. And I can, I, I mean, I was very involved with the Discovery Center. I was very involved with both of the pools, I've, and the rec centers. I've watched what consultants have told us it would take to operate those facilities and the types of revenues you're going to need to operate. And you're going to have to create either through fees or increasing your taxes. And we, we've struggled to do that. And this is, this is such a substantial capital investment and it's a substantial operating investment. If our community desires these amenities, we need to talk about a financial strategy that gets us there. One percent sales tax is what this question unfolds. And you can read it, it describes just about anything and everything associated with Park and Rec. One percent sales tax, in our estimation, would generate enough revenue to operate not only the department independently as a special revenue fund, much like you, we do for water, sewer, or storm. This would generate enough revenue along with the revenue they generate within the department to sustain it. And not only sustain it from an operational standpoint, sustain it from a capital investment standpoint. It would generate enough revenue for Aaron over the next twenty years to manage a department and leverage capital investments continuously. Now, Move MHK is a strategic plan that we haven't done in our community since the early nineties. It was necessary. It was necessary for us to go through the stakeholder meetings, have the steering committee, have the, the community, the surveys, all those things that combined into a study that really laid out a roadmap for a long period of time and addressed multiple parks, multiple facilities, multiple operational strategies. It's a great plan. But I've seen people bring plans stacked up to here on this podium and be frustrated by plans after plan after plan and we don't do anything because they're, they're costly and the priorities change and, and the views and, and the opinions change. This strategy puts the money before the decisions. I know that's not going to be totally popular. I understand that. But I also know how hard it is to fully define and bake concepts that go out for sales tax that are just about the capital improvement and don't address the operating side. It's very difficult. This puts a tremendous pressure to trust this governing body and trust staff to go out and do what we say we're going to do. I recognize it. And it may not be where we're at right now. It's a scenario. But for the last several decades, we have talked about indoor water. And when K-State shut down the auditorium, it became a conversation that was coming up every six months, every year. When are we going to do this? How are we going to do this? This is an alternative. It gets it to the point where Park and Rec, back in twenty-one and twenty-two, we had a lot of community discussions about Park and Rec. There were some decisions and some, um, disagreement in this community about how we're going to address things within the general fund. But it is very difficult for this department to compete with Manhattan Fire Department, with street maintenance, with rules and regs out at the airport that we have to fun, fund and finance, to compete with accountants and engineers that are also in our general fund that are very difficult to come by these days. This department is very important to this community. And it has been sandwiched between a lot of pivotal discussions in the past. I don't see that getting any easier. Our streets cost so much more today to maintain than they did five, ten years ago. It is expensive to get out there and fix these things. And we just had a bad winter and we're faced with a blitz right now trying to get our streets back to a condition that our citizens can tolerate. This happened in twenty nineteen, turned the corner in twenty, twenty-one. Staff felt like we could get another year. We can't predict the weather, it was a rough winter. And that's what's occurring. We're having a lot of massive failure and we'll be spending a lot of time there. Manhattan Fire Department is on the verge of fifteen to twenty million dollar investment. Relocating the training center stationed out east six in the event. Highway twenty-four continues to give us the opportunity to grow. Our own fire department headquarters is in need of repair and has a capital improvement list. These are pressures on the general fund that will continue. It is not going to get easier for Park and Rec or the idea of an indoor aquatics facility to materialize, given the environment we're going into. The tolerance to raise property taxes, in my opinion, is nil. There just isn't much. We've seen it more and more in the last ten years than the prior fifteen combined. That question can be tweaked. This is an example. It's also based under the state statute that allows for a permanent sales tax. We have the capacity to go to two percent in a sales tax. We are at one percent today. This would be the second one percent. But you see it expires in twenty years. It can be renewed, but it would expire. It would give a term to this of a twenty-year period. So this approach would create that special revenue fund. It would be separate and distinct from the general fund. It would be created by ordinance and it would have provisions in it in terms of how you can spend the money and how money can come in and out of it, much like our utilities. We do have a transfer to the general fund out of the utilities, but that's for work that is accomplished by the clerk's office, the legal office, the human resources office, the finance office. They don't hire independently those professionals. They use them out of the general fund and they compensate the general fund for it. We can look at something like that for Park and Rec. I'm not total, totally here tonight to advocate for that entirely, but we do have to consider the rest of the organization supporting this department.
Jason, is the utility, um, department separate? Is that by statute?
Yep. It is. And we've adopted ordinances that allow us to do that as well. Uh, but it does create it separate as an entity. The enterprise funds are, are based in state statute, yep. So this would support the department for the next twenty years. We have that current point two five and it expires in twenty twenty-seven. One of the strategies is to go ahead and rescind that and add an additional point seven five in this question. Now that resc- rescinding that or, or revoking that point two five could be a gesture made by the commission prior to the vote by way of resolution. It wouldn't necessarily bind the commission, but obviously if the one percent were to pass, it would give the opportunity to the commission and come rescind the point two five and then let the full one percent take effect. As I mentioned before, that one percent's roughly fifteen million annually. We would be looking at ten to eleven million dollars to operate the Park and Rec department. We would be looking at 10 to 11 million dollars to operate the Park and Rec department. That would free up 4 to 5 million dedicated towards indoor, indoor water, infrastructure, facilities, parks, at the zoo, the Discovery Center, et cetera. They do generate about 3.5 million dollars in Park and Rec, and that's a combination of the zoo and Discovery Center, the rec programs, and the special liquor tax, which is around a half million a year. And that also would be dedicated towards those, those same subjects, same topics. 18 and a half million dollars annually, 13 million towards ops and minor CIP, which would allow you to work through Move MHK over a long period of time. But in that first nine years, between 2026, eight years, 2033, you'd be looking at dedicating 5.5 million dollars a year towards indoor water construction. Now, the approach with this money would be no debt issued. We have done this between 2017 and today. We've used cash for both indoor recreation facilities at the junior highs. We also did it at Sico. We are in a positions where we typically get to a point, we issue temp notes for what we can't cover with cash, gives us enough, another three and a half year to accumulate, but allows us to start construction a little early. That pay-as-you-go, again, not looking at any long-term debt, you might be able to issue temp notes. Obviously, we'll watch revenues, but we want to mirror what we've done today, and that's really beneficial to us from a bonding and debt capacity not to have to issue this type of debt. But you would have that 5.5 million available, as it mentions here, on other major CIP from 2034 all the way through 2045. So the Move MHK plans, when you get into Northeast, Northview, other improvements in City Park, other facility and park improvements throughout the entire inventory, we have 29 parks today, or is it 30? 29. And, I mean, you're going to see the deficiencies in the report. It goes through each and every one of them, and this would provide a revenue stream and an avenue to start making some of those repairs. The indoor aquatics strategy on a proposed indoor facility of about 44 million, you would probably look at further design and study for the next two years. Determining that location, the features within it, the amenities, it would be a matter of really working through a local process. Move MHK has some, some concepts and some ideas, but really, in the next two years, you're looking at making that final decision to where you start construction in 2027. I would just highlight, even in 2016, before we asked the question in 2017, and what actually became a reality at the middle schools and in Sico, they're different. Those are even bound by location, but where we started at the school district with those two recreation centers and where we ended was all dependent on where the school district wanted them, how their expansions were going, and moving forward with those projects. '25 and '26 would give us that time to take and look at the community and explore it, much like they did back in '06 and '07, but you could look to start construction as early as 2027. Part of this sequencing is also to allow us to accumulate money. That indoor aquatics facility, we could look to open in 2029, 2030 timeframe, but we would be looking at collecting revenue for multiple years and accumulating cash before we actually started construction. But once we started construction, we could issue temp notes for the remainder, accumulate cash for that three, three and a half year window, and have enough to pay off these notes and not issue any debt. One of the strategies associated with this, you'll notice 2025 is not part of the revenue stream. 2025 would be an opportunity to pay for Sico. If you're going to rescind the .25, it won't, it won't carry forward all the way to 2027. It would stop at the end of 2024. So you would then apply the 1% towards Sico construction, which is that full 15 million dollars after rescinding the .25. That would allow you to fund that improvement in 2025. It would also set you up for the, the previous timeline to accumulate money towards that indoor aquatics construction. I'm really trying to prevent the .25 and this question overlapping and increasing the sales tax rate by more than is necessary. If the, if the 1% were to pass, it would be a .75 increase altogether. As I mentioned, it could be rescinded, then it'd be a net .75, and we're looking at currently that 915 rate in Manhattan and Riley County and that 945 in Potawatomi County. And again, we dedicate that first 15 million generated next year towards Sico. We recognize that the, the general fund would benefit from this park and rec sales tax. The annual operating subsidy in park and rec has ranged anywhere from roughly 5 million to 8 million a year. This would be available to the general fund to help sustain our needs when it comes to vehicles, equipment, capital improvements. As I mentioned, we have expansions anticipated at the fire department. We know street and traffic operations based on their studies that they've recently provided to you all. They're expecting additional investment, IT, communications, accountants, engineering, et cetera. Those pressures are not going to subside. We are more than likely going to be engaged more with the private sector than we ever have been to provide a lot of these services because we simply can't recruit and retain those professionals in, in the municipal government workforce. We're not the only ones experiencing this. The accountant shortage is nationwide and the engineering professionals as well. These, these are not situations we anticipate resolving quickly, and we want to be set up in a position where we can continue to have that work completed for the organization and the community without really skipping a beat, and we know that's going to be costly. Here's your sales tax rate today in Manhattan in Riley County. The food tax at 2% for the state of Kansas will go away. It's supposed to go to zero at the end of this year. I suppose it could happen earlier. I have a hard time with state sales tax rates. We've watched them move a lot over the years. So this is where it's at today. It may drop by that 2%, which would bring that food tax down to 2.65, moving, moving beyond 2024. But that, that's really the breakdown of the 915 in Riley County, and it's 945 in Potawatomi County. So you can go shop at the East Side Dillons and pay 945, and the West Side Dillons is 915. That's, that's the discrepancy we have in Manhattan. It's been that way for a few years now. I'm not sure just how well-known everybody understands that, but we also have special taxing districts. The rates in both of Riley County and Potawatomi County, under the scenario we talked about previously, where we would basically rescind the .25, add the 1%, the rates would adjust to 9.9 in Riley County and Manhattan, and they go to 10.2 in Potawatomi County for a sales tax rate if this were to pass. I call your attention to the current sales tax rates in Kansas. It is exceptional what municipalities have done over the last 10 years. When we were exploring sales tax in '15, '17, '20, even '19, we, we showed a base sales tax rate for first-class cities, and we were hovering around seven or eight, in, in the top seven or eight of, of the 20 roughly first-class cities. There are so many special revenue districts established in the state of Kansas. It, it comprises over 1,900 cells on an express, on a spreadsheet. This is a link to that site. You can go click on the Excel document. I sorted them. I sorted them by sales tax rate total. In Manhattan Town Center, which has that .75 CID at 9.9%, there are 679 cells above it that range into the 10s, 11s, and 12%. And these are districts all over the state of Kansas. I know I've shopped at them because I started looking at them on the map, and my brother lives right near one. It's Jersey Mike's in Kansas City. I love Jersey Mike's. Their sales tax rate was over 10 and a half percent. I didn't know it when I bought my sandwiches there, but I found out in the mapping. They're all over in Kansas City. They're all over in Lawrence and Topeka and Salina and Dodge City, and they're really in areas where, yeah, development's taking place. Sales tax rates are just climbing because a lot of municipalities are experiencing the same thing we are, and there's just such an intolerance for property taxes. I, I provide that as a resource. Sales tax rates are sensitive, but if you really pay attention to where some of these rates are at across the state, more than likely, you've shopped there. We're looking for input and direction. I know this is a heavy topic, and it bounces between general fund and park and rec. And I, I apologize if there's confusion on the subject, but it is, it's, it's complex. We, we briefed you at your, again, in January at that retreat, in February, just trying to get you a financial picture. Regardless if you decide to put this on a ballot, our budget year for 2025 is going to be a challenge because we can't count on this. We know if it makes it to a ballot in November and the citizens are allowed to vote on it, we will have passed a budget already for 2025. It's why that 2025 strategy to capture all that revenue and dedicate it towards Sico allows us to keep moving forward with the, what we've got structured today. If it happens, we can move forward in a different direction come 2026 budgeting, but 2025 would be a year of transition if it passes. If it's not considered, we're obviously back into a mode of really trying to figure out how we want to move forward with that general fund and to finance Park and Rec. I give a lot of credit to Aaron. We brought him on last April. We knew we needed a pretty intense process to get a strategic plan out in front of the community this spring and summer. We wanted to take advantage of a presidential election. It brings out over 20,000 people in our community to vote on initiatives. The last one we did was 2020, and that was the Economic Development Relief Tax, and it, it was successful. We found that asking, the more presence, the more attendance, the more people who vote and asking these community-related questions, we've had success. We've had success in all, in smaller ones, too. But we, we felt like this was an opportunity. Some things came together. We looked at it from a 20-year strategy versus a 10. It frees up enough revenue to sustain operations in a 20-year strategy. It really pinches it under a 10. But we're looking at a pretty comprehensive approach, not only to Park and Rec, but to the general fund itself. I know Aaron's got some slides in here from last meeting, which talk about his approach from a Park and Rec perspective. He's happy to dive into that again, if you'd like to see that. But tonight, we're looking for that direction and input. We've got budget meetings scheduled for June 4th. We've got budget meetings scheduled for June 11th. We'll have budget all summer long. There's going to be a lot to talk about when it, from a general fund perspective and from a lot of different operational perspectives. This is kind of teeing up. Do you want us to keep working on a question? Do you want us to keep edging towards this? We'll need to make a decision on this by August in order to make a general election November ballot in 2024.
Jason, thank you for a very comprehensive presentation. I think this has consolidated a lot of the discussion that we have been having for the past four months and helped to clarify some of the staff thinking with regards to that switch from initially considering two sales taxes, which personally, I thought was a little crazy to begin with, to one that is much more, I think will be much more palatable, much more understandable for the citizens of Manhattan. Commissioners, do you have comments, questions? Do you want to hear additional information from Aaron at this time?
I think my biggest comment is, or concern about this is the communication from the city. You know, I recognize the work that you have put into, and, and the committee, the Move MHK committee, has put in to, to doing this draft plan. I think that, from the feedback that I've received, folks are getting kind of tied up on specifically the City Park concept, and I'm sure you've heard the same, Aaron. And so I, I think it's really important for us to drive home that, that slide that, that has the timeline of, you know, we're not going to put a shovel in the ground until 2027. And in between that time, we have the time to talk to external partners for funding and [bleep] the best location and design the best facility that, that our community wants. I can't remember who said it the other, a couple, couple weeks ago, but we need what the city will accept, not what we think that they want, right? Was that, did I get that wrong? It was something like that. But we need, we need to make sure that we keep in mind the overall goal of this pool, right? Whether it's in Sico Park, City Park, Jurassic Park, but whatever. You know, that needs to be our overall goal, and I think, Jason, you kind of highlighted it when you talked about the previous, previous times that the city has tried this. It's been essentially designed and located already, right? And so people are not voting on, do you want a pool? It is, do you want this pool in this location? And it's a lot easier to say no to that than, do you want a pool that we're going to engage and, and make sure, and spend as much time as we possibly can to make sure that we get the right thing? So, you know, I think if, if we, we don't do a good job of communicating that, we're going to just, we're going to flush the mouse, and it's not going to happen. I would hate for all of this work to be put into this draft plan and then we not have the money to implement any of it. So I think that's going to be the key, is, is communication and, and community engagement. I do have one question. Would this include the cemetery improvements that we talked about a couple of months ago?
That's something we could, we could bring back. If, if that were the desire of the commission, it could probably be phased in, and we could look at it. I do think there's some improvements associated with the zoo and the cemetery that we need to look at pretty quick. If you haven't taken that tour with Scott or Mike, I really encourage you to.
Yep.
They're, they're working in some pretty, pretty tough conditions.
Yeah.
And we're entertaining business in some pretty tough conditions out at Sunrise. So we do have capacity on the debt side to do those. When we look at our forecast and the bond and interest, we could absorb that project. There's enough debt rolling off. Replacing that would not have a, an impact on the property tax or sales tax revenue in the bond and interest fund, but those are options you can consider, for sure.
Cool. Thanks.
May I say, I think this is fantastic, the MHK study that you did. It breaks down every park in Manhattan, and it talks about what's needed in those parks. I think the worst thing we can do as commissioners is to put something on the ballot that we don't think will pass, that we're concerned about. I have had a lot of input on this issue, and surprisingly, from people who are usually very supportive of such things are not as supportive. Now, maybe because I live by City Park, and, and that really is a no-brainer. It's not going to, it's not going to float there. There's just, I'm sorry. The size of it, the impact, that kind of thing. One way that we've made things more attractive to more voters is to make it sort of a multi- approach. For example, not just a pool, and, and these don't have to be giant things, but to get the disc golf fixed in Warner Park, that kind of thing. Each park is, is identified with its needs and that kind of thing. I have no idea some, many of the things that give it, downgrades or bathrooms. I don't know what it costs to put a bathroom in Northview, but I think we need to, I think we need to mull this over a little bit. I think we're trying to shove it down people's throats. I'm sorry. I just don't see it passing.
Yeah.
Not with the kind of- Not with the kind of negative connotations with taxation that I'm hearing. I don't understand, I thought you said we, the question was going to be in August and then another thing in November.
We had talked about that in February.
Okay, that's not going to happen because we're not going to.
Correct.
So let's take that off the table.
The only option is to, a ballot question in November.
Well, the only option, we could have a, we could have a mail-in ballot, too.
Oh, sure.
I mean, if we're going to raise 15 million.
For 2024, to meet some sort of general election, the only option is November. Special elections, mail ballots, all types of options. Have a different cost, have a different timeline. And again, this is one scenario.
Yeah.
I would encourage Aaron to talk a little bit about this slide because the operations side in the minor CIP, he's got a strategy here that gets him into parks and facilities in existing conditions a lot sooner than the 2034 on the major CIP.
Sure, and, you know, I appreciate that. I do have some issues, though, with making this a fund that just goes to the recs, to park and recs. I mean, why should, you know, the other funds we have are statutory. This is just, we're going to say, future commissions are going to say, we're turning all these dollars over to park and recs. I suppose first, future commissions could take it back, but I, you know, if that's what we tell people we're going to do, it would be difficult. Maybe you get a commission that only wants traveling teams. I mean, I think this needs to stay in the general fund. I don't think it should go off negative. One thing, I'd like to see us go through the budget period. This is a new, fairly new commission. There's all kinds of things coming to us. We also have a new manager that's coming to us. I don't, I would like to let that person come in with all, without all kinds of predisposed ideas that he or she might have to react to. I'd like to give them more of an open palette to look at. One of the things that's said in here was, it talked about subsidies and it said rec programs are very high. It said swim programs are moderate or can be easily anticipated. So we can't go to the public and say, this is what it's going to cost exactly. But we can give people a better idea. And we can't say, as we have been, 40 to 60 million. We got to say how much and where it would be. Also, I would think that we could possibly start, once we get the approval, by putting some of this in temporary notes and build, we need indoor water. The parking structure in Aggieville is still in temporary notes and that's been there for five years or so.
Just to clarify, we can't go build indoor water. We have to go to a vote. You don't have the authority to build indoor water independently.
No, but as the vote came, we could immediately.
Yeah, it would have to go to a vote.
I'm not, I'm not taking a hole in.
Right.
No, no, but I'm saying, we really need indoor water before 2030.
And that begs a question. You have to put it to a ballot to get authority to go build one, just reminding you.
Yeah, but I think we could speed that, that calendar up a little.
And I don't disagree, but you got, you have to factor in operations.
I know, and we didn't, we didn't do that well in 2017.
Well, we had a strategy. It's just a matter of implementing that strategy. And again, I can go back to rec centers, pools and the Discovery Center. You have to implement the strategy that the consultants and professional staff put together. And if you don't, you run into budget constraints.
Right.
First, I thought the presentation was really good. I think it explains it all, think, follow it, understand what's coming down. And I've said this before, too, that I think it paints a pretty bleak budget picture that's out there and how it's going to be difficult for us to operate with some sort of significant tax increase. But it, it's kind of, I want my cake and eat it, too. We're not just going to solve our budget problem. We're going to go spend a huge amount of money on top of solving our budget problem because we're going to, we've got this big budget problem, we need to fix it. But we also want a cake over here, we're going to do all of it. And that's where I kind of have a hard time, and I've heard that from other people, too. It's like, well, you know, just get things, get things running well and so you can afford them versus taking on a bunch of other stuff at the same time. So really, that's, you know, you know, kind of the issue I have. And I do agree with Karen that we've got a lot of stuff going and we're going to have someone new coming in and would like for them to be able to take a look at it and see where we're going. You know, in some ways I'm like, well, I want to just say no and not let people vote on it. But I do, again, appreciate what Karen said is, you know, we should be something that we would want to stand behind, not vote yes and then say, but I'm not for it, I'm just doing it so you get a chance. So, kind of still thinking about it, actually.
Peter, did you have another comment?
Just a couple. Karen, I kind of, I got to disagree about the general fund. I really like the idea of having the independent parks and rec budget. And I think, and the reason I do is because traditionally, across this country, when municipalities have a difficult financial year, parks and rec is one of the first things to get cut. And this kind of goes into what you talked about, John. Yeah, you know, we are coming into kind of a lean year. My concern is that we are competing with like-sized municipalities, not just regionally, but across the country, for visitors, for people to move here and for businesses to bring hopefully more people. If you look at Manhattan's population over the last 10 years, we've lost about 1,500 people. And things are getting more expensive, so we have not widened the tax base at all. And if, my concern is if we are not competitive with things like parks, because I consider parks to be vital to a healthy community, those financial difficulties are just going to become more difficult because we will have fewer people. So, you know, I definitely see that argument of, well, we have other priorities, let's get things just to running and then worry about making them better. But I don't think that we really have the time to do that. With our, we've had our flat population, I think we've got to do, there's something's got to change. Either we're going to start going down or we've got, we've got to start going up. And if we start going down, it's going to just keep going down and down and down because we're going to just have less and less of a base. So, you know, but if we are able to protect our parks system and improve our park system in that way, and think of it as a utility, because no one is, no one is ever saying, let's cut the funding for the solid waste treatment plant.
Because it's statutory.
Right, not only because it's statutory, but because then we would have a lot more worse problems than legal. I think we need to, I really want to have better parks and make it a priority and signal to folks in the community and to folks who are thinking about looking here that our priority is that healthy community. And we do that by having good parks. It's a very easy thing to see. If we have up-to-date, clean parks that people are enjoying, it's very easy to see that we have a good community.
What he said. Peter, I agree with you. I was initially a little bit skeptical about the idea of having this dedicated funding stream for parks and rec, but have come to appreciate it, looking a little bit at the history here in Manhattan and understanding how it's an easy pot to raid sometimes. People complain about staffing issues, you know, and it's not necessarily that the bodies aren't there. I mean, it could be, that's part of the issue, but we have to have the resources to pay the staff as well. I, as I said when you concluded, I think this has gone a long way to clarifying for people, I hope other people who are present here today, I see a couple of heads nodding, that this has made it much more clear about what is intended if this should go to the ballot. So I appreciate the work you've both put into it. We are discussing this this evening. What else do you need from us tonight?
Yeah, no, I think your input and feedback has been good. And I'm not, I'm not hearing to stop. The next conversation on the agenda may actually lead to a stop or a go scenario because two of you are thinking about it, contemplating it. Two of you are, you know, it sounds somewhat supportive to keep going forward. We're happy to incorporate this in our discussion as we bring up the budget in June, July and August. But eventually, you know, it'll get either scheduled for action or not. And that'll be an August decision.
I do hope that we can have this put in the library or things, you know, but, or people can, you know, you can go online, but it's very hard to read it online, lots of tiny print. And I hope we can hear from the Parks Department, Parks Committee, that they're going through it and they're really targeting what other things are really needed in the community along with indoor water. Because I think that there really are some things that we should be thinking about. And I really like the way they've gone through every park. Some parks, I think, like the one between Anderson and Granville, we could maybe do away with. But it's clear that there's just a lot of different things we need to be doing. And as I've said, I'm sure you're all tired of hearing me say this, but I really think we have to have a discussion and ask the public where our focus for parks and rec should be. And is it traveling teams and that kind of thing? Is it, is it making money for, you know, or is it to improve the general health of the public? And if so, how do we pay for that? But as I said at the very beginning, no one put this on the ballot and have it go nowhere.
So Commissioner, if I can answer a couple of those questions. When this document's kind of finalized and adopted, we'll break it down by section to have it online so it's more digestible and it's easier to reference, so.
Could I also say that the Legal and Voters is having a panel, Aaron, you're there, on the 30th of May to talk about this issue. And I think it'll be interesting to hear what they have to say and what the public that attends that meeting has to say.
Sure. And so, again, rough estimate, including the development of indoor water and potentially indoor rec, would be about $200 million of capital that's going to come out of this plan. Again, these are concepts, these are plans. The idea that we would complete the whole thing in 20 years is just not how these things work. So you prioritize, and that's what you've seen in the concepts. So again, we're trying to look at this holistically. CECO's getting done now, City is where we're putting our attention to, Northview, Northeast. And then operationally, how this works is, if you remember me approaching kind of the financial strategies, just so we have an idea. The operational strategy here is to shrink the subsidy as much as possible, which frees up additional dollars for capital. Now, there's obviously a big indoor water component to this. And the reason that's the primary is because we did ask the people what they wanted to see and that was a resounding desire from the community to the point of a 73%. All PIR ratings related back to indoor water, except for one, which was trails. And so we want to make sure that it's clear that we did ask the community, that was the point of the survey, and we will follow that in how we prioritize projects. Again, at the end of the day, these are all concepts, it's all fluid, it will continue to be updated through the time. There's, much less than five years versus 10 or 20, what we have in there today will change, right? We're not doing things the same way we did 20 years ago. So we'll update it annually. We anticipate updating with a statistically valid survey every two years. The two-year mark is ideally because of cost. But every two years, to make sure that that document is reaching out to the entire demographic of the community and we hear from everybody. So indoor water's been a priority on several community surveys, including the one we just did, and that's why it's at the top of the list. Everything we're doing right now for parks and development is a concept, to the point, we would come out and we would do a public input session to finalize design and determine the final location. And we can easily do another statistically valid survey to ask about location and find out from the entire community where they'd like this pool.
Got a question for you. The way I understand it, for this to work long-term, it does involve a pretty good cost recovery model.
It does.
And I think that's one of the things that we all need to understand. Because we put this out that sales tax, we're going to pay for parks and rec with sales tax. And we come out with a cost recovery model and people are like, what do you mean, I have to pay fees? You told me you're paying for it with sales tax. We did, the rec centers, we said we were going to have cost recovery. And everyone said, what do you mean, cost recovery? We were going to pay with sales tax. So we didn't do the cost recovery.
Yes, so my anticipated goal would be between 35 and 40% as a cost recovery goal. And that would be the top of the line. Now, we've got to work to that, we were 22% last year. So you can't just pull the Band-Aid off and jump to that in a year or two. So we would work towards that goal. I would refer you back to this slide that was in the February presentation about the financial strategies. They still apply and they will come through in this document about the cost recovery, reducing expenses, creating those efficiencies, program growth, sponsorship program redevelopment, creating new opportunities through programs. One that didn't end up going, but a simple example is we were looking at trying to create roller skating around the tracks on a Friday night for kids. Didn't get any participation, but we were throwing it up on the wall to see what would happen. Again, strategic partnerships and scholarship program restructure for the whole point of, there are some people that will not be able to afford these fees. And so we need to make sure that that's available to them. And it could be as cheap as $0 for them. So I've already got kind of a draft and we'll be bringing that after the adoption of the plan, assuming that you adopt it.
I think that's a great point. And I know there are people in the audience who can speak more intelligently about this than I, but a commitment from the community financially allows us to go. There are three foundations in park and rec. The zoo has one, the Discovery, well, it has two. The Discovery Center has one and the Park and Rec Department has one. There are also potential relationships that we can forge. We know we can get with USD 383 and talk about participation in this facility on an annual basis and possibly even towards the capital. The more money we can go out and raise and offset that five and a half million going towards indoor water on an annual basis, we can then redirect that money back into the park system. There's incentive for us to operate efficiently. There's also incentive for us to get out there and raise money to help with these capital improvements. Because it just frees up 29 parks with a laundry list where you're averaging six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. I mean, per park, there's just so much to do. And we've been kicking this can for a long time. Getting this out to the community with the partnerships, with the cost recovery, with the foundations, we feel like we can gain a lot of momentum.
I think that's also a benefit to separating it from the general fund is that it doesn't then become, oh, you got a sponsorship for this, we can take that and put it into the general fund. No, it stays in parks and it goes to parks.
And we've seen that with our foundations. And a lot of caveats, all three of those groups, when they come, their money is going towards specific improvements. And we have relationships, we create documents and agreements, and that money is not used for another purpose.
I'm going to call now for public comment.
Yep.
Is there, yes, please come forward, sign in, name, address, residential address, organization you represent. Please state your name and you will have five minutes. You can only speak once.
What agenda item was that?
It is Agenda C, 9C. It is Agenda C, 9C.
Okay. Can you all hear me? Right here, cool. That sounds horrible. Anyways, my name is John Cole, I live at 502 Vatier. I just wanted to talk about the Parks and Rec stuff because I know it's been kind of a hot topic, especially with the text messages that came out, oh, what was that, two weeks ago? So I'm from Wichita originally, I moved to Manhattan around eight years ago. So I'm pretty familiar with some of these shenanigans that happened with those text messages, with the Parks and Rec things, mainly because that's the Stevens family. That's at least who I'm thinking it is. They've been targeting communities across the state with their Parks and Rec developments, saying, hey, you can't pass these sales taxes because it's going to, you know, we need to save taxpayer funding. Recently happened in Prairie Village about a year ago. Cedric County actually stepped in and stopped the city of Goddard from passing their own finance agreement with the Stevens family to do something similar. So I'm just, the reason why I'm bringing that up is that I don't want the commission to be spooked by some of those tactics that are happening because I know that's, that's kind of what they do all the time. I also wanted to touch on, you know, Commissioner Opel brought it up too, about the city language around some of the Parks and Rec funding. I was worried when I saw their Facebook posts about a week ago that we were going to go down that rabbit hole that Kent City recently went down with the Chiefs and the Royals. I didn't want it to turn into a whole boondoggle and, you know, we end up not getting that sales tax passed. So I just, I really would like the city to at least be more clear with their communication around it, so that way, you know, folks know what we're signing up for. Yeah, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, John. And yes, I think I know I anticipated a much more packed room tonight. We have all received multiple phone calls, texts, emails regarding the, the text and the postcard that went out. And there are people in the community who have been backtracking, trying to ascertain who, what entity was behind that. And it's somebody with enough deep pockets to be virtually invisible. So, Gail, please.
Hi, good evening Commissioners, I'm Gail Urban, 1627 Wyndham Heights. I've addressed you several times over the last couple of months related to the Manhattan Parks and Recreation Foundation. Tonight, I, I would simply comment, I, I do agree with you that this, there is a lot of confusion in the community and the pace at which we want water in the community, whether it's 20, 2028 or 2029 or 2030. If we don't move this process forward and stop studying and start taking action, we'll not have water in 2030 either. I do think it's important that we allow the people to vote. And the sooner that you make a decision to put that on a ballot in November, will give the community time to be educated, learn about it, and not still be wondering is what is the commission going to do? So I would urge you to, as the staff present it, I'm asking you to, to spend the time to think about it yourself so that you can make a good educated decision and let the process move forward so that it can get to a, a November vote and allow the community to make their statement. If the community doesn't support it at that time, then, then we know, we know. But allow the time to, for the education to happen and make your decision quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? Not seeing anyone, I will declare public comment now closed. Commissioners, any additional questions? Okay. This was a discussion item, so no motion is needed. We will now move to Agenda number 9D. Discuss filling vacant city commissioner position, vacant mayor pro temp position, and vacant city commission position on the Riley County Law Board and other boards and committees that commissioners serve on. So what are our thoughts?
I'll, I'll just make a brief presentation, Mayor and Commissioners. The actions that we've looked to tonight from you all is direction and action on the process to fill the vacancy. I'll get into some of those options in a minute. But we're also looking for the mayor pro temp election to occur as well as appointing someone to the commission term on the law board. It's, both of those are fairly important, timing-wise, to get those done as soon as possible. There are some other terms that need to be filled. If you want more time to consider those, we can stick those on a consent agenda in the future. The library board, senior center board, there's some other things that we have listed in here.
The library board is the mayor.
It's automatic, yeah, okay. But that's a transition.
And the senior center board nominates the person they want.
We have traditionally made those appointments so they can vote and they're not just assumed. So we have asked in the past, I believe Brenda, to go ahead and make those appointments formally so those entities recognize those people. But you're right, it, it's typically assumed by the mayor, don't disagree. The open position, we did contact Riley County and we got some feedback about the primary. The filing date and the potential for more than three candidates filing requiring that primary was going to be problematic. The county has not provided an estimate yet, but they did suggest it would be expensive. They're also just worried about the confusion. It's a partisan election, creating a ballot that has the city commissioner primary on it that would narrow the field down and then move it to the general election in November. They were, they would be very pleased if we went a different route. You have the option to appoint, that, that can be set up in a variety of ways. Obviously tonight, you could, you could make a motion. You could vote tonight on what you want to do. You could also give direction for staff to handle some sort of process that you want to identify, much like you do an appointment to a board. You could have folks fill out information, you all could receive those, you could contemplate it, mull it over and, and determine the replacement at a, at a future date. You're not bound by the 60-day rule that's present in the statute since we chartered out from underneath that state statute, it's really at your discretion. And the process is really up to you. So as four, you can continue to operate as four for 18 months if that's what you chose to do. If you want an appointment, as a process, you can identify. So just wanted to go over those basics. Be happy to answer any questions relative to not only the appointment on the commission, but any of the other seats that the previous mayor was filling.
How long will, and this may just be something that we work out. How long will Susan's term as mayor be? Will it be the rest of Wynn's term and then the term she was supposed to have?
Yeah, she's filling the unexpired term, which would run through the end of the year. And we would be the same on the law board as well, filling that unexpired term.
But we could vote to keep her on as mayor next year so she gets to have a full year?
Yeah, there's a lot of different, there's a lot of different scenarios. You know, with Usha leaving and being replaced by the vote, we're, we're out of rotation. And we kicked around one scenario where Susan finishes the year, Karen takes the next year, and then they repeat Susan and then Karen again. That would actually put us back on track. That's one scenario. But every January, you'll have the opportunity, as a commission really, to make that decision.
And I mean, it's not a particularly pressing issue, I was just curious.
But it did set up a situation where someone with five months' experience is thrust into the mayor.
Yeah.
And, and it is, it's a challenge. I, I think Susan has done a great job.
She has.
She, she has handled her first meeting just beautifully. But it is, it's a challenge. She's been in a lot, we've talked a lot, there's just a lot to catch up on. And, and she made a great suggestion to come in and talk with department heads just to get a familiarity with really the organization. Again, you usually have two years of sitting up there, two budget cycles, two conversations with all the partners and all the players that come before you from a financial perspective, projects, I mean, it's just a lot to absorb. So we, we recognize it, we want to facilitate as many conversations as we can with Susan. But yes, you, you're pointing out something very obvious to us as well, that it is a challenge.
That I'm up to.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, people get elected as mayors all the time.
They do, they do.
And sometimes they're, sometimes they're mayor in charge of everything.
That's right.
We have Jason.
Can I make a suggestion that we tackle these, the two, the two other parts of this item to make a motion to appoint one of the commissioners as mayor pro temp? And to make a motion to appoint someone to complete Wynn's term and then open up for a discussion about a process we might proceed with.
Some, some, before I, before I let you go down that path, you may want to open on those items some sort of public comment period. It is on the agenda, it is for action. And, and that typically would have some public comment. So if you're going to identify the mayor pro temp and you're going to identify the law board replacement, those are typically on consent agendas. The mayor pro temp process is, is strange because it really, it's on the agenda that you don't get public comment on it. It's just a unique item traditionally. It's the night the mayor takes seat, it's a vote that happens. It's not like the public has a lot of comment on it, but you're, we're in an odd situation. So we contemplated hosting one public hearing process for those two items and then moving into the replacement and allowing for comment on that as well, if you desire. Does that make sense?
I think so. So is, is there public comment on?
No, just do the mayor pro temp.
Okay, all right.
Is there a nomination for him?
I would like the, ask the commission for nominations for mayor pro temp.
I would nominate Karen McCullough for mayor pro temp.
Thank you.
Hearing know-it-they're nominations, city clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Mayor Adam, Mayor Adam, Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Law board.
Law board.
I, I think I would like us to have a quick discussion on the law board. John's already on it, so he doesn't, he can't, he can't do double duty. I've been on it for years, but I'd be happy if Peter is interested.
So I would love to. I don't know that I can make those meetings work with my work schedule since they are in the middle of the day on Thursdays. And if I understand, Mondays. But there are also different locations around the county sometimes?
Occasionally, yeah. And this, this term is only till next March.
Right.
So you could.
In January.
No, March.
Is it March?
Yeah, because the, the law board.
Yeah, I thought it was the end of the year, yeah.
The end of this year, the end of his term as mayor. Because he, he was the mayoral.
But he was, oh, because he was the mayoral, okay, sorry.
Both me and the one coming on are off at the end of the year.
Yeah.
But you're on till March, no?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and how long do those meetings usually last?
Hour, hour and a half.
Most of the time they're an hour, but like.
The other day, there were like a couple hours, we had the budget and a bunch of executive sessions.
So I, yeah, I just, I don't know that I'd be able to make that work, you know, with, with my, my side job.
Well, I just wanted you to, you know.
I appreciate that. I, I, yeah, I would love to, but I, I really, I just don't think I'd be able to get to the meetings.
Is there a motion to make a nomination for a commissioner to fill the unexpired term on the Riley County Law Board?
Do we want to ask for public comment?
Sorry. Is there any, is there anyone who would like to make a public comment on that appointment? Seeing nobody coming forward, I will say public comment period is closed. Is there a nomination for the law?
Make a motion to appoint Commissioner McCullough to fill the remainder of Wynn Butler's unexpired, unexpired rotating commissioner term, which begins immediately and will expire December 31st, 2024.
Second.
All right. Commissioner Mata has made a motion, Commissioner Opel has seconded. City clerk, can you read the, take the roll, please?
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Mayor Adam, Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes, my mother always said you should vote for yourself.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Should we move forward with the motions for the other committees or?
No, I don't think so.
It's really up to you all. I mean, if they're traditionally the mayor's appointee and everybody's comfortable with that, we'll put it on the consent agenda next week or a couple of weeks.
Are there other committees that you might want to switch out of though?
Well, the, the ones I was serving on were also the mayor pro temp. So just for public knowledge, we're talking about the community liaison group for NBAF, which is typically the mayor, the library board, which is concurrent with the mayoral term, Manhattan Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, which is concurrent with the mayoral term, Riley County Law Enforcement Board. We have just elected Karen to take that position. And the Visit Manhattan Steering Committee is the mayor pro temp.
But if you want to go to it.
All right. Okay, going back to some direction on the process or action of the process to fill the commission vacancy, as Jason described, we have a number of avenues ahead of us. We do not need to make a decision tonight. Can we just share our thoughts about how we might prefer to go about this?
First, we'll just talk about whether an election or not, maybe we can do that and then if we agree on that, we can move to the next. I don't want to do the election just because of the complicated nature of it coming up. If we have a primary or we don't know what's going to happen, and I think the last thing we do, just want to add to the list of confused elections that are out.
The other, the other point, I, I agree with you. But mine is more timing because if we do the election, then we don't get that fifth seat filled until January. And we have some very important decisions that we are making that I think should be made with five people.
I, I concur for the same reason, yes.
I do too, and I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Commissioner, ask Commissioner Morse to fill the remainder of Wynn's unexpired term. I think, because she brings a diversity that we really need. So often, most of the commission is, are from the west part of Manhattan. And Commissioner Morse is from Northview. And I think we really need to hear from those people. And I think she's been a most successful commissioner in the past. Plus, I've never known anyone that I've served with that's been more active in attending various things and reporting back well on it. And so I would hope you would, someone would second that. And I really think we just ought to get going on it and get to the budget.
I'd simply comment on the motion. Nothing against Commissioner Morse, but I was thinking of nominating Commissioner Hattasol, who was the next in line as far as the past election went, who also has extensive experience on the commission. If you look at the last election, we have the two top vote getters and then the next three were pretty close together, little over, little under 3,000 votes. And the next vote was about 1,550. Also, he did, he was willing to serve, he took the time to run and go through the process. And I think that's one of the things that also differentiates him. All of us had to run campaigns, they're not fun things to do. And if we're going to look to one of the former commissioners, I would probably lean to the one that was ready, willing, and able and went through the pain to get back on the commission.
I am, was hoping that we would have a little bit more discussion. Along, we have had a number of citizens' names raised to us, both. Both, both formally and informally. Several, at least one has approached all of the commissioners, sending out, sending his resume. There have been other individuals who have been, I wouldn't say nominated, but suggested by community members. Another commissioner has, past commissioner has just entered the room, welcome Commissioner Estabrook. I, I guess before we talk about individual names, I'd like to consider whether we want to be so expeditious as to just nominate one or the other tonight or if we want to reflect a little bit more on a possible application process.
Well, we already have two motions. So I think we need to either second those or not second those.
Yeah.
Is there a second for?
Either.
Either for, is there a second for John's motion? Okay, I'm, what happens when there's no mo?
Motion dies.
Is there a second for Karen's motion? All right. Next week, we are going into, we will be having a special session. That was an item on tonight's consent agenda. And we can continue this discussion next week, I believe.
I don't know that we need to stop having this discussion right now.
All right.
And in fact, I think we should have more discussion on how we should fill this appointment and, and find the right person. You know, we, we've already had two ideas that, that I think have failed. But the, the biggest reason for me is that we really need to have, we need to be more clear on how we're going to fill this. I don't, I did not expect to have any type of, of motions this evening. Strictly because I think that we still need to be more transparent on how we're going to select this appointment. It, it kind of runs counter to what, I, I wanted to have an election, right? Because we, we need to do this as democratically as possible. And we are a governing body who will be appointing one of its own members. And I think that that's, that's somewhat, I mean, it's not unprecedented, but it's, it's unique. And it doesn't happen a lot. And so we really need to be, we need, we need to move quickly, but we need to be judicious on how we do that. So, yeah.
I would just say, obviously, me and Karen pick different people. But I think part of our reasoning was the same as, well, she had a little more with the diversity in there. But recent commissioners who have been through things like the housing thing, which we have coming up, knew about the new city manager, has been aligned with the things in the budget that we've been working on with the Move HK. And so I think it's going to be hard to come up with some criteria to go through to say, select someone more randomly that's not going to have that experience, that's going to serve us better than that.
I think if we have an, an open application process, those two folks are still welcome to, to compete with others who may want to. I, I think we have people in this community that may, you know, I think we have, there are other past commissioners that could, that could serve here. There are people who have not served on the commission, but are still more than competent to, to figure this stuff out and, and have probably been paying attention to commissions for longer than I have, certainly. You know, I, I, I understand the, the, the value of having some, some experience, but I don't think that it's a necessary criteria.
I wanted to clarify, you do have this on your agenda next week, so you can continue the conversation. Whether or not you want to or not, that's fine. Talking about scenarios to take applications, I would encourage you to think about it from a perspective of, do you each want to bring forth a name or two or three and share them with each other? Opening this up to an application where you just hear from the entire community, you may be sifting through a lot of names. And, and then you're going to wrestle with, okay, where's, where's my criteria and somebody else's criteria? If you come up with names yourselves and you throw them in the hopper and you kick them around, eventually three of you have to vote on it. So, I mean, the motions tonight, really, I don't think are all that different for where you're headed with a process to consider. But you could create something that if you reach out to someone, they fill out the app, it's considered. It's like an invite. And I, I just suggest that because if you open this up to the community and you're not really clear on where you're going from a criteria perspective, you might be sifting through applications for some time. It's 18 months. We got to get through.
Two budgets.
Two budgets. This cycle, we'll be back in front of the voters next November. It is an 18-month period. So I, I just offer those observations to you all. Knowing board appointments come through typically the mayor, the mayor shares those with the rest of you all, you make a vote. But those are open applications. But there are criteria and there are things that sift people out. And, and it's just something to think about from your perspective. They have to work with you. So you coming up with names and sharing them with each other might be an alternative.
I guess, you know, one of my responses, John, to your recommendation is Commissioner Hattasol came in fifth in the election last year. Which for an incumbent to be ousted by not one, but two political newbies, I think is saying something about community perception. In contrast to Commissioner Morse, who was the top vote getter in the two elections that she did run in. So I think, you know, to my reading, that indicates a lot of community support across a wide swath of our community for someone who is perceived to be a bit more neutral or center in, in, in decision-making.
I, I guess I wouldn't just draw the same conclusion. It was a strange election with four people up on the ballot. And also, again, when you look at that demarcation line of where it came in, there's three of us that were really close there at, at, at the end to say that, you know, one came this, that. I've run and got one of the most, first time I got one of the most votes anyone's ever gotten. So things kind of ebb and, ebb and flow with it. I'm going more just by the recent experience and the commitment. And also, he did take the time to reach out to all of, all of us and was pretty, pretty public and, and willing to, you know, be out there with it as well. It was the email was to all the commissioners.
That came today. You might not have seen it.
Yeah.
Is it, could we do something where we have like a, like Jason said, everybody bring one or two names? And then we, we individually provide like a ranking, right? And then we can have, you know, take the top three or top two and, and discuss those in an open meeting. I'd really, I'd like to do this as, I mean, trying to say this as democratically, but as open as possible.
Of course.
And I, I don't want it to have the perception of we are choosing our favorite, you know, of, of any type of, of favoritism or anything like that. You know, I don't think anyone is surprised by, by the two nominations this evening. But again, you know, I think we, we, we could have an opportunity here of having someone serve with us, again, who has been been engaged in the community, but hasn't had the opportunity or, or maybe the, the knowledge to, to run in an election. It is really hard. And so this could give, you know, possibly someone, a, a new person who hasn't served before, who maybe represents a demographic that we haven't had on the, on the commission for a long time or just, just somebody who hasn't had the opportunity to run an election, have the ability to serve for that 18 months. And then when November comes around, if they want to run again, and then, great, then the community can decide if they did a good job during that 18 months. You know, or, yeah, we could just have somebody who's served before, fill in that 18 months and then not run again. Or, or they do run again. I don't know. It's kind of a philosophical question that we have. Do we, do we want to try and, do we want to try to give somebody a new opportunity? Or do we want to try and preserve the, the original makeup of the, the commission that we had starting in January? I don't know. I mean, we're, obviously, we're not going to have the exact same person, right? That's just not possible. But I think we really need to, to be, to discern this much more comprehensively.
I feel like I'm asked to be, being asked to be Solomon tonight. I like the idea of us each bringing several, a name or two to the next meeting. I think we also would simultaneously need to be working on those criteria that we would be looking for in order to evaluate the, those individuals. Is there a way that we, would we?
Sure, we can do ranked voting or something. We can have a list and people can vote, give our top person five points in their next, you know.
I don't know if we can do that. I mean, I think we have to be a majority vote of the commission.
Well.
The ultimate decision.
The ultimate decision does have to be that, but I'm just saying to try and pare down the names that we bring, right? So that we, we have a, a pool, we pare that down.
So you're saying have a public ranked vote that doesn't count to get it down to?
No.
A secret ranked vote.
Well, that's a good point, right? How do we do that? I mean, I understand that. Yeah.
I think what Commissioner McCullough and Commissioner Mata did this evening was what you're going to need to do. It's, it's, I think it, obviously, the other two weren't prepared to do that or take that action tonight. But you are going to have to contemplate names and motions and decide whether you're going to second them and vote. However you want to do that amongst your, you know, yourself to get to that point, that's what we need the feedback on. But eventually, you're getting to a point where a motion's made, a second, and three votes for that individual are cast.
Okay.
So if it's not tonight, do you want to do that next Tuesday?
Sure.
Do you want to schedule that for June 4th? That's really the feedback. However you want to sift through names and bring them forward and have reasons, giving yourselves a week, two weeks, that makes sense.
I think, I think that would give an opportunity for us who have, those of us who have received additional names suggested to confirm that those individuals, for example, if a third party has suggested someone, it would give us an opportunity to confirm that those individuals actually are desiring to, to take this position. So that would be helpful.
It would. And just, there are criteria to be a commissioner. You've all ran. You know what that is. Keep that in mind. Thank you.
I do think we could do it next week. I don't think we need endless time.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I would like to get this filled soon. Can we all have a homework assignment and bring a name next week?
You have my name.
Okay. Can we have a homework assignment, Susan, and bring a name next week?
Will each of you please consider, at least, consider bringing forward at least one name at the special meeting next week?
Got it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I don't know if you want public comment on that last item.
Yes.
I think it'd be kind of fun.
Is there public comment on our last item concerning possible nominees to fill Wynn Butler's unexpired seat? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Okay. Yes. Now, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Yeah, I'll move to adjourn the May 21st, 2024 city commission meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Opel made the, the motion to adjourn and Commissioner McCullough made the second. City clerk, please call the roll.
Let's see here. Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Mayor Adam Chek?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.